I'm going to call to order our December 15th Cary Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and we are going to begin by adopting our agenda. Do we have any modifications? Okay, seeing no modifications, could we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt it.
We have a motion, a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries unanimously. I will note that we are one member short tonight. Next, I believe we have to approve the minutes from our November 17th regular meeting. Do we have any changes to those minutes? Saying none, can we have a motion to approve? Well, you have to speak, you have to go into the microphone.
A motion to approve.
A motion, and do we have a...
Second.
You have a motion, a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries unanimously. And now, we're going to drop right into our public hearings, but before we do that, I want to just spend a minute talking about the rules, particularly for folks that haven't done one of these before. We're going to begin with a presentation by town staff, and they will give us a fairly detailed, fact-oriented discussion of the case. When they finish, I will open the public hearing, and we will begin with the applicant, who will have 10 minutes to present their specific case for their application. Following that, I'm going to open the public hearing to citizens' input, and we are going to have a five-minute time limit for that input, to be fair to all speakers and to keep us from being here until 1:00 in the morning. You'll notice there's a little black box on the podium to my right, to your left. When a speaker begins, there's going to be a green light on that little black box. When you've spoken for four and a half minutes, a yellow light is going to come on. When you've spoken for five minutes, that light will turn red, and I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks, to be fair to everyone. Ask you to avoid repetition. A number of you are here trying to deliver the same message. Perhaps you can pick a spokesman. I ask you to please direct your comments to the entire board. We will not interact with you. This is our opportunity to listen to you, and the procedure says that we're supposed to listen and not talk. It doesn't mean we don't care about what you're saying. It just means that our process doesn't allow us to speak. We ask that if you are going to speak, that you fill out a speaker comment card, give it to our clerk, who's the gentleman in the, I'm not sure what color shirt that is.
Salmon.
And the salmon shirt. And then, if there is a number of you, I ask you to kind of queue up on this stairway to my right, to your left, and you will speak at the podium with that little black box on it. That said, let's begin with case 14REZ23. It's the Keller property. Ms. Granon, help us.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately 13.39 acres located at 2110 and 2200 Stevens Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. It's located on the north side of Stevens Road. Cary's land use plan designation for the property is medium-density residential. There's a small portion of the land highlighted in green that's designated as parks and open space. The existing zoning is residential 40. The applicant has proposed residential multifamily conditional use. Presented at the town council public hearing were the conditions offered by the applicant to limit the use to townhomes and neighborhood recreation, and to set a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised, and there is a valid protest. The parcels highlighted in yellow show the land area that constitutes a valid protest petition. The areas highlighted in blue show property that, for one reason or another, in this case because it was beyond the 100-foot boundary, were not eligible. We still kept track of what the comments and the concerns were, however, of all the parties that submitted a protest petition. Traffic concerns was the number-one concern, density, road design and future improvements along Stevens Road. There were about six comments pertaining to the streetscape buffer width along Stevens Road, concerns about stormwater management and environmental impacts, and two comments that pertained to the proposed use of townhomes. Since the town council public hearing, the applicant has sent in new conditions. They are still limiting the use to townhome and neighborhood recreation, but they've offered a condition to limit the maximum number of dwelling units to 80. So this would drop the density down to 5.9, approximately six dwelling units per acre. They've also offered a condition to attenuate to a 25-year storm event. Our current ordinance requires you to mitigate for a one-, five-, and 10-year storm event, so this would exceed LDO standards on stormwater management on the property. They've offered a condition that all units shall have a garage, and no more than 14 shall be a one-car garage. And they've offered a condition that they would provide a 40-foot-wide Type A opaque streetscape buffer adjacent to Stevens Road. Per the land development ordinance, a 30-foot streetscape would be required along a collector road, so this would exceed the ordinance standards by offering an additional 10 feet. Furthermore, they've offered a condition to provide community gathering space of 5,000 square feet of contiguous space, and that area shall include a playground, play structure, or covered structure. The site is impacted along the northern property line by a stream buffer according to Cary's GIS maps, and feel determination of such features would be required at the time of development plan review. Here's a proposed greenway trail along the northern portion of the subject property, shown here highlighted with the dash-green line. Cary's transportation plan identifies Stevens Road as a collector roadway and Piney Plains as a thoroughfare. This shows you the location of a future proposed transit route along Piney Plains Road. And this concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments and the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Good evening, and welcome to the new members. Glad to have you. My name is Michael Dean Chadwick. I reside at 208 Oxford Mill Court in Cary. I'm representing the property owners, the Kellers, and we are requesting rezoning of this property to townhomes. The existing comprehensive plan calling for three to eight units, you know, we capped it at six, which originally we started at 120, and then went to 107, and then 90, and finally, we are at 80 units where we said we would cap it at that point. Based on the comments that some of the neighbors have raised in the community, we kind of went through them, and I personally have maybe north of 20 hours of meeting individually with the neighbors in their homes at the coffee tables, making sure that there was not any misunderstandings, not necessarily that they would agree with me, but I did want to make sure that they had the facts. A couple of things that I want to touch on, and I'm going to be here to answer any questions you have later. Yes, we've done the buffer, but one of the things that we heard from the city council when we first brought this forward were some of the concerns that you saw earlier. And I just want to talk about a couple of those because they are very significant. Years and years and years ago, I'm guessing 30 years ago, maybe 40 years ago, there was a pond put in at Wellington. It was never meant to be a stormwater pond, but through the years, that's what it became. So it was undersized, underdesigned, and has really been abused. And all this water that's north is draining through us, through, down Stevens Road, and then into Wellington, really into this pond that was never designed to have that. We have, this is really a big number, but we have 270 acres of drainage area, of which the Keller property is about 5.5% of that 270 acres. So behind us is a lot of water coming to us that we will now have to control because it enters our property. Of course, as you all well know, once water becomes on your property, it's your water, and you have to handle it in such a manner as been approved by the staff with stormwater. We originally designed the stormwater pond at a certain size, and the engineer is here to speak to that. We have basically doubled the size of that pond. Number one, that it's an aesthetic feature. Number two, that it is a feature that does exactly what it's supposed to do and give the people below us a little bit of a break. We've also talked with the neighbors on things that can't be conditioned, as things that, you know, we would like to do and help them, because number one, we're going to be there for a while. We'd like to be good neighbors. And those conditions will stand in place because I've said we would do them, and I've given them documents to back that up. You know, originally, it was if the homeowners association would remove their protest petition. And then, I got to thinking about that, and I said, "You said you'd do it." And so whether or not they remove it, if we go forward, we'll keep our commitment with them. And lastly, I just want to say a couple of things on traffic. It's an amazing thing, traffic. And the national government, the National Association of Home Builders, and other organizations have done these studies, and what they find out is that a single-family home generates about a car a day at the peak hour, while a townhome generates .06. So if we put 50 single families there versus 80 townhomes, it would be virtually the exact same number of traffic units. This is a great opportunity to help clean up some of this horrible stormwater that exists for these folks that live there, and for us to come in there and take a bad situation and make it better. It's really not a question of fault by anybody in the past. It's just kind of what happened. I was talking with one of the neighbors earlier, who told me that that pond was a fishing hole. It wasn't meant to be a stormwater pond, and so it's been overburdened, and then the people down below the pond, of course, have to suffer for that. So we would like to clean that up. I appreciate your help. I'm here, I'll be here the rest of the night to answer any questions you might have. I don't think I need to be too lengthy because I'm sure other things will be coming along. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point in time, the public hearing is open to citizen input? Does anyone want to address the board on this case?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I said the public hearing is now open to citizen input.
We can't hear you, that's why.
I think we need to turn the mic up a little bit. Is this better?
Yes.
All right. Let me repeat myself. At this point, we will open the public hearing to citizen input. I didn't think that there was nobody out there that wanted to talk to us about this one, so there was something wrong. Just a reminder, if you do want to address us, there is a card that you're supposed to fill out and give to the clerk. It helps if you do that beforehand. And I'm going to ask, please start off with your name.
My name's James Center. I live at 2317 Stevens Road. I'm here to complain about, of course, the townhomes. I think the property could be developed as R12 or so with single-family residents and be a whole lot better off. The little pond he was talking about is a inland wetlands, is federally guarded inland wetlands that he's talking about. Turn it into a storm drain for a 25-year storm. Well, Presswick right across the street, they've got 100-year storm drain, and they have trouble with water problems. And so his going over and fixing a little 25-year storm drain is not going to solve the problems of Wellington Park, or backs out of my property. I've got a storm drain that runs from the other side of the road that comes across my property and down into Wellington Park. So the storm, and nobody's mentioned anybody to Army Corps engineers about this wetlands. I haven't seen Boyd Devane's name brought up with North Carolina Department of Environmental Resources, or Billy Lee's Cary Town Resource Officer. And every time I've asked them about it in the meetings, they just blow it away, like, "Well, we're not going to do nothing with it. We're not going to do that. It's not there. It's not on the GPS map." I give all kinds of runaround answers about the wetlands. I think they could very easily damage the wetlands and not care. So after this meeting tomorrow, I'm going to get in touch with Army Corps engineers myself and see if I can get them to move along with it. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rod Keller. 2110 Stevens Road. Obviously, we're the family that's proposing this rezoning, and basically, we lived here for four generations, and we've watched Cary develop all the way around us. We feel that this particular proposal fits in line with what the master plan calls for as far as like townhomes and that type of density. In addition, I just want to say that when Presswick was up for the rezoning, we supported that, which is across the street from us. And that's about it. So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
My name is Monty Maney. I live at 2416 Stevens Road. I've been there a little over 35 years, so I've seen this street change in many, many, many directions, and pretty much, they've all been positive directions. I'm here to express my support for this project. I've been in support of it from the get-go, but I thought, instead of talking about this project, I would talk about Michael Dean Chadwick the man, because I met him, we were here at a zoning, one of those community zoning meetings, that initial meet-and-greet sort of thing, and he was a nice guy. I thought, well, he's got a lot of good ideas. He seems to be a good listener. He's concerned about what's going to happen to the environment, to the people, to the citizens. And then I left, and I thought, well, who is this guy? Is he like somebody who's going to, is he all talk and no action? So I went home and I Googled him. And he's an interesting man. This is not his first rodeo, as it turns. He's built, he's developed over 15 communities. He's built over hundreds and hundreds of houses and townhomes. And in addition to all that, he has founded something called Michael Dean Chadwick Ministries, where he is supportive of teens and addicts and troubled youth. He's a really huge asset to the community, and I think we can trust him. So with that, I ask you to consider his proposal and rezone this property, and let's get it all behind us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Well, my name is Stuart Suskin.
There you go.
Okay, Stuart Suskin. I live at 836 Benbury. I've been there for about two and a half years. I came here to express my concern about the traffic on Stevens and the intersection of Piney Plains and Stevens. I'm trying to envision a period of construction that probably will last a year, or two, or three, and I'm envisioning construction trucks, materials, cement, wood, workman, parking. I'm trying to imagine where all those trucks are going to be parking, because Stevens even right now is a very, very narrow road, and there are problems right now. One of the problems is that the school bus lets the kids off right on the corner of Piney Plains and Stevens. A lot of the mothers park right on the corner there. So the corner is already a traffic problem, a congestion area. That's a very difficult turn to make because you don't have good visibility of Piney Plains when you come into it or out of it. But my main concern is the construction traffic, the construction trucks, the workmen. Where is everybody going to be parking? I wonder if I can get the contractor to address that question for me. Would that be possible?
Well, right now, we have a bunch of folks we have to listen to.
Okay.
And the best way to have that conversation is get up with the contractor and sit down over a cup of coffee and let him answer you directly, because, you know, the process doesn't let us get into that kind of detailed conversation I think you need to have. So I would encourage you, get ahold of the applicant and ask them that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Patrick McCabe, and I live in Presswick subdivision. And first of all, I want to say that I'm not opposed to development of the property in question. I'm opposed to the rezoning of the property to a higher density. This is for two reasons. Number one, the already high density in the area and the unfeasibility of Stevens Road being a corridor for hot increased density. Point number one is the surrounding area has been greatly impacted by higher density. This has negatively impacted the traffic, noise, water drainage, and the tranquility of the area. Stevens Road is well-suited for houses, so there is no reason the density can't be lowered to accommodate single-family homes, as was done when our subdivision was built on the same acreage. Point number two, Stevens Road is already incapable of handling the current traffic it receives. At the entrance to the road, there are two cars. Two cars can barely fit, and there is congestion as the school bus picks up kids each morning. As I go to work, I see this. This traffic will shortly increase with already-approved new homes being built and a road cut through to the very large Wellington community. Even with modifications, Stevens Road does not have the breadth and depth to handle multiple cars waiting at the corner to turn out, not to mention the amount of cars exiting and entering the proposed new community entrance. Turning out will continue to get worse if other higher-density projects are approved for Piney Plains, which is in the works right as we speak. It is inconceivable that the entrance to the new community of such high density can even be proposed or considered for Stevens Road, especially considering the proximity of Presswick subdivision's houses facing the proposed entrance, and the lack of the road footage before and after the entrance. The traffic on Stevens will greatly impact those who live deeper into Stevens, who will have trouble getting access to Piney Plains, especially in high-volume times. The higher density that is being requested further complicates traffic, noise, and water issues, multiplying the burdens of the existing residents. All of this negatively impacts the enjoyment and ease of life. The Keller property can be developed with a lower density in a wise and citizen-free way. The current zoning at lower density could be kept to allow the development in a more cohesive and thoughtful way. Thank you, and I appreciate your attention and efforts to keep Cary a nice place to live.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, my name is Stuart Suskin.
There you go.
Okay, Stuart Suskin. I live at 836 Benbury. I've been there for about two and a half years. I came here to express my concern about the traffic on Stevens and the intersection of Piney Plains and Stevens. I'm trying to envision a period of construction that probably will last a year, or two, or three, and I'm envisioning construction trucks, materials, cement, wood, workmen, parking. I'm trying to imagine where all those trucks are going to be parking, because Stevens even right now is a very, very narrow road, and there are problems right now. One of the problems is that the school bus lets the kids off right on the corner of Piney Plains and Stevens. A lot of the mothers park right on the corner there. So the corner is already a traffic problem, a congestion area. That's a very difficult turn to make because you don't have good visibility of Piney Plains when you come into it or out of it. But my main concern is the construction traffic, the construction trucks, the workmen. Where is everybody going to be parking? I wonder if I can get the contractor to address that question for me. Would that be possible?
Well, right now, we have a bunch of folks we have to listen to.
Okay.
And the best way to have that conversation is get up with the contractor and sit down over a cup of coffee and let him answer you directly, because, you know, the process doesn't let us get into that kind of detailed conversation I think you need to have. So I would encourage you, get ahold of the applicant and ask them that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Patrick McCabe, and I live in Presswick subdivision. And first of all, I want to say that I'm not opposed to development of the property in question. I'm opposed to the rezoning of the property to a higher density. This is for two reasons. Number one, the already-high density in the area and the unfeasibility of Stevens Road being a corridor for hot increased density. Point number one is the surrounding area has been greatly impacted by higher density. This has negatively impacted the traffic, noise, water drainage, and the tranquility of the area. Stevens Road is well-suited for houses, so there is no reason the density can't be lowered to accommodate single-family homes, as was done when our subdivision was built on the same acreage. Point number two, Stevens Road is already incapable of handling the current traffic it receives. At the entrance to the road, there are two cars. Two cars can barely fit, and there is congestion as the school bus picks up kids each morning. As I go to work, I see this. This traffic will shortly increase with already-approved new homes being built and a road cut through to the very large Wellington community. Even with modifications, Stevens Road does not have the breadth and depth to handle multiple cars waiting at the corner to turn out, not to mention the amount of cars exiting and entering the proposed new community entrance. Turning out will continue to get worse if other higher-density projects are approved for Piney Plains, which is in the works right as we speak. It is inconceivable that the entrance to the new community of such high density can even be proposed or considered for Stevens Road, especially considering the proximity of Presswick subdivision's houses facing the proposed entrance, and the lack of the road footage before and after the entrance. The traffic on Stevens will greatly impact those who live deeper into Stevens, who will have trouble getting access to Piney Plains, especially in high-volume times. The higher density that is being requested further complicates traffic, noise, and water issues, multiplying the burdens of the existing residents. All of this negatively impacts the enjoyment and ease of life. The Keller property can be developed with a lower density in a wise and citizen-free way. The current zoning at lower density could be kept to allow the development in a more cohesive and thoughtful way. Thank you, and I appreciate your attention and efforts to keep Cary a nice place to live.
Thank you.
Good evening. Boy, I haven't been in front of P&amp;Z in quite a few years. I know a few of you, I think. At least, I know our chair. I've met him at times at this podium. My name is Ruth Merkel, and I'm a 25-year resident of the Wellington Park subdivision. And I want to preface my remarks by saying that I'm only speaking for myself and not on behalf of my homeowners association. But I am here tonight to give you my reasons why I support this rezoning. It is the development, the second phase of a development that was previously approved by both the planning and zoning board and the council. At his request, I first met with the developer of the Keller property because I wanted to hear from him how his plans would impact the residents of Wellington Park, where I live, as well as my neighbors in Presswick and on Stevens Road. He shared his plan for the already-approved development, I think they're called Windwood, as well as drawing for the adjoining Keller property. That's the subject of this public hearing. Now, during our initial meeting, we discussed many concerns of the neighborhood, particularly connectivity and stormwater flooding. And while I'm not directly affected by the flooding, it does impact my neighbors, as well as the owners in Presswick. I was impressed with the many options that Mr. Chadwick offered for mitigating the stormwater
a good product. Now, we all know we can't please all the people all the time, but I truly believe Mr. Chadwick will continue to address our concerns and to work with anyone who genuinely wants to work with him. I've looked at his plan several times, and I believe what he is proposing tonight's a good development, and for that reason, I personally support it. But I have another reason for supporting it, because I believe this townhouse development has the potential to provide affordable but quality housing for young professionals and seniors, which is sorely needed in Cary. I have three adult children living in apartments who want to be homeowners one day. If we want to keep them and other professionals in Cary, we have to offer them housing options that fit their lifestyles. Am I done? Oh, if this property is developed as is proposed, and any future runoff to the neighborhood properties is reduced or even eliminated, and then traffic is directed away from Wellington Park as much as possible, I do believe that you will find most of my neighbors will also be in support of this development. And thank you all for all you do for the citizens of Cary.
Thank you.
Respected council members, I am Saru Sachdeva from seventeen oh five Calendar Avenue. I have a couple of observations and would like to draw your attention towards our biggest concern, that's density. The developer has proposed to reduce the density from hundred and seven units, which is eight units per acre, to eighty units, which translates to six units per acre, of townhomes. We appreciate his concession, but for various reasons, it is not sufficient. We at Prestwick are thirty-seven single-family homes in twelve point nine acres, thirty-seven single-family homes in twelve point nine acres. There is a new development, which Mr. Chadwick is developing, at the far end of Stevens, which are nineteen single-family homes in seven acres, nineteen single-family homes in seven acres. There is a proposal for hundred and ten townhomes in twenty-three point seven five-plus acres across Piney Plains Road, that's the Dillinger property. How come eighty townhomes in just thirty acres? This also brings to light the issue of overcrowded schools. We know and appreciate that the town council is paying extra attention to this issue. We have residents in our subdivision whose child was denied admission to their zoned elementary school because the school had reached its maximum limits. We feel the additional residents generated by Keller development and other surrounding developments will only add to the already-existing issues. For each individual parcel, the traffic study may not seem necessary, but keeping in mind thirty-seven homes in Prestwick, nineteen new approved at the far end of Stevens, fifteen or so homes already on Stevens, and with eighty new proposed townhomes development, which is a two-car garage, and also the additional traffic generated from the through-way traffic to Wellington, which Mr. Chadwick has proposed, it seems imperative to have a traffic study done. The proposed rezoning is likely to have significant adverse impact on the natural environment, especially water and stormwater management. Thanks a lot. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Robin Rhodes. I am probably the only Stevens that's left on this road alive. My grandfather was the gentleman that purchased Stevens Road. I do have children. My children's social network is not a computer, it is outside. So my children will be, they play right there on the street. I do have a big concern with this traffic, you know, that's going to be coming up and down on Stevens Road. I'm not against a development, new development of all, because my mom was the first one to get it paved, you know, to, to get the road paved. I'm just, my main concern is the construction, traffic, then the traffic with the eighty townhomes. I'm a little confused with why we're having homes built on the other side of my uncle's house, but then we're having eighty townhomes built beside me. Why? Why can't this just stay single homes? Why do we have to have townhomes on one side of the only two Stevens that's left of them this road, and then have single homes on the other side? I'm really concerned about the children and, and even the kids that, we all grew up on this road, and I remember the construction, how bad it was when my mom came here and had, had it proposed to get Stevens Road paved. And I remember that traffic, and I remember the red dirt, mud, that was on the road. And there is a lot of red. I've never spoke at one of these. I just wanted to, just to put that in your minds, and, and thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Jackson. I live at two ten Oxford Mill Court in Cary. I have lived next door to the applicant, Michael Dean Chadwick, for the last ten years, and so I can tell you firsthand that I have seen him through the ups and downs of our economy and the real estate market, and I can assure you, he is a man of integrity, he is committed to our community, and he and his family have been excellent neighbors to us over the, over the years. Professionally, I'm a certified financial planner, and as such, I'm always paying attention to things that affect the economy, whether that be the global economy, our national economy, and in this case, the local economy. And one day in passing, Michael did briefly mention to me this project that he was working on, and so I began to think about some of the great effects that such a project would have on our community. In my opinion, it looks like this project will generate two things, jobs and revenue, both of which we all know are the lifeblood of a healthy economy. So let's take jobs first. According to some government studies, each residential permit can have the effect of generating hundreds of jobs. Now, you may think, how could that be possible, because it shouldn't take a hundred people to build one home? Well, this is, this is possible due to something called the multiplier effect, which I imagine some of you are familiar with. For those of you who may not be familiar with, with it, here's how it works. The first impacts are the jobs and spending that occurs during construction itself. So these would, jobs in this phase would include the actual construction workers building the homes, as well as workers in companies that support them, such as the office workers and the accountants and so on, that, in the firms that these construction workers are working in. In addition to this first wave, there are also ripple effects beyond the direct impact of housing construction, which in economic terms, you might call the indirect impact, as well as induced impacts. The indirect impacts are the jobs and spending created from businesses that are supplying the construction operation. So for home construction in this case, that would include those that were providing goods, whether it be building materials, cabinet manufacturers, or it could be businesses that are providing services to these construction organizations. In this case, it might be architectural firms, engineering firms, trucking companies, and so on. Then the induced impacts result when the workers involved in these projects go and spend some of their income in the region. So for example, perhaps the workers that are working on the homes go and spend some of their wages at local restaurants, retail stores, health, healthcare establishments, and so on. This spending creates new jobs at these consumer-related businesses. Finally, after the construction is, is finished, this housing is now occupied, and further economic impacts occur. If the housing units are rented, then rental payments are going to contribute to economic activity, and the household income of all, in this case, eighty households, is going to contribute to the economic activity when these households spend their disposable income on items such as food, clothing, transportation, healthcare, and other services. New jobs are then created in these businesses as they expand to serve these new residents. So the bottom line around jobs is that these eighty, eighty residential units has, does have the potential to create thousands of jobs for our community, which of course is, I see as a huge boon. And then there's the revenue side. So the total cost of this project is somewhere in the fourteen to fifteen million dollar range. These will then be later, later sold to generate another roughly twenty-four million or so. So all this can be added, this revenue can be added to the tax base. This, of course, does not include maybe a half a million or so in various fees at the town of Cary for things like building permits, development, park and rent fees, et cetera. And then not to mention the property taxes, taxes that would now be collected on these eighty new homes year after year. So as a town of, a town of Cary citizen for the last ten years, myself and many more to come, I am thankful for people like Mr. Chadwick, who are willing to take business risks to better our community. This project has the potential to create thousands of jobs, add tens of millions of dollars to our local community, and Cary's fiscal footing will also strengthen as a result. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Roberto Perea. We own the twenty-one oh four, twenty-one oh six Piney Plain corner. Before we get into purchasing this property, we're looking for the best of the best location in Cary. We've been around looking for the, the best location, and this is why we have the best locations. And we bought it with vacant land, full mosquitoes, swamp, durned, dark, and this is not the picture that I want to have as a neighbor. So guess what? We do have the opportunity to have the, one of those, the best projects that I've seen in paper, and I can get along with the, with the person that's going to do it, Michael Dean, and it's extraordinary beautiful property. And what's going to happen with this, the impact for all of us, for all of our neighbors, what is the impact? We are not going to have downgrade our properties. At the contrary, we're going to have high, high prices going in our properties because that neighborhood, because that beautiful property. We work together with, with, with the Dan, and, and we just going to have a beautiful extension of that road, Stevens Road, for the sidewall. So we don't, we concerned big time about the safe of the, the kids going back and forth to the school bus in the morning, and they're going to have a safe sidewall. And then we'll, they, they, that's what they basically, they provide. I'm pretty, I'm pretty concerned about my neighbors, especially the association. I do have a beautiful opportunity to get along with the family, William Goldberg, and he give you a very nice hospitality, a few minutes, a few minutes of taking a meeting with a cup of coffee, and we discuss all the terms and the things, and definitely the most like thing that I like it is the fact that the, the kids are alone with their kids. I mean, what happened is, the kids has a beautiful, kids around that can just play around on, on the streets, on the land, and I will be pretty safe to have all those kids together and beautiful families. And everybody has the opportunity, the same way we bought a property in Stevens Road and Piney Plains, the same way other people had to have the chance to have the same opportunity that the next-door neighbors has. They are happy because they own their own home. They are happy because they raised the kids with, with, with a beautiful home, the owners. And we are not going to have across the street rentals. We're going to have owners and beautiful people, have upscale construction and a high-level people, the, the, with the kids, they do have to have the opportunity to have, the same way we do have a home, a property right across the street, they do have the right to just get another home. And there is Michael, have the opportunity to give us, and their chance to have a beautiful neighbor across the street. We're not going to have a unsafe road, dark, with mosquitoes, with, you never know who's in there, what kind of animals is going around. We're going to have a beautiful property right across the street. So this is the picture, before, looking right now what it is. After, in the next year and a half or two years, what you're going to have? And guess what? The older properties is going to go high, and then the whole entire city council, which is most beautiful people in the city council, in this particular office, we're going to have revenues too. I mean, there's this pretty concern about the, the money-wise. Here we are, everybody is going to have the opportunity. So I, I request everybody to please no more position, just think about what, what the things were together, along with everybody, and don't go against with nobody, just put the things together, and let's have the opportunity to have really a beautiful, beautiful, right across the street of us, a beautiful neighborhood. They deserve it, to do it. They have to have it. Thank you very much. Have a beautiful evening.
Thank you.
My name is Pathik Patel. I live in Benbury Way, the Prestwick community, which is right across the property being First of all, thank you for having me here. Thank you for, to the developer, for making me feel part of the community, you know? If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here. What I just passed out is a snapshot of the community that is being proposed. First time around, traffic, one of the biggest concerns. Stevens has been designated a connector on the, on the sheet that you're seeing. There's two red lines, which is the future connection to Stevens Road. I've shown other bubbles, nineteen new homes, thirty-seven of Prestwick, eighty that are proposed in this one, and the older ones, which are the fifty-four existing homes. Now, you see those homes, and you see where it goes towards the forty freeway. So all these homes, once the connector is built, is going to pass through Stevens. The same road goes closer to Dillard Elementary, Dillard Middle School. So when the traffic study was not being done at the first meeting, there, there's reasons of hundred AM peak requirement and seven fifty regular traffic. But considering these houses, once the connector is built, the Stevens Road far exceeds the hundred AM peak traffic. I've not shown the math here. I'm an, I'm an engineer by background, so I like numbers, but I'm not sure of the math here, and I'm sure the council committee will look into the exact numbers. But let me assure you, it passes the hundred mark. So a traffic study is needed, number one. Number two is, there are hundred and ten townhomes being proposed, right at the corner of Stevens and Piney Plains. Now, the density of that is, as some of you might be aware, is three and a half or something, about hundred and ten homes in twenty-three, twenty-four acres. What Mr., what the developer, Mr. Chadwick, has proposed here is six, thirteen acres and eighty townhomes. So I'm also a businessman on, on the side. I understand the economics and, and so on and so forth. So having lesser density is also an economically viable solution. I am by here no means saying that, you know, nothing's going to be built. It's a prime real estate. Something is going to be built there, but not with the density that is being proposed. Six homes per acre is far too much. Lesser townhomes, lesser density, I'm fine with that, but eighty is just far too much, because just thousand feet away, you're seeing hundred and ten townhomes. Density's three and a half. So what is being proposed here is almost twice of that. To be frank, I don't know what else to say. This is, this is very simple in, in my mind, being a businessman and being an engineer. I, I understand what goes behind these processes, and, you know, I believe that Mr. Chadwick, the builder, has genuine interest in the, in the community. The first meeting, where eight townhomes per acres were, was proposed, that was ridiculous, and there was, said no from the very beginning. Six is what I feel the developer had in mind from the very beginning. I feel like the first round was just a tactic, in my mind, I feel like that, you know? This is what was originally planned, and this is what... This is what was originally planned, and this is what, you know, seems like the developer is going to get. But I feel it's it's really too much. So traffic study is needed, and we need to reduce the the density. I welcome any other developer, and I know it will build, if not right now, two years from now, five years from now. Question is, are we going to get that greedy in terms of getting the development in so fast, so quick? Thank you once again for the for the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
Before my five minutes starts, I want to welcome the new council members.
Okay, I've been, oops. I gave you the wrong minute. Five minutes hasn't started yet, one minute. Okay, here we go.
He hasn't pushed the button. I've been watching him.
Okay, I've been sort of, well, I've been before all of y'all.
First of all, can we start with your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Virginia Selkirk Griffin. You can call me Jenny or Mama, either one you want to. I've lived on Stevens Road longer than most. I live at the very bottom where the water comes. I have no objections to this project at all, not one. I want I've been listening to what Prestwick has been talking about. Number one, they've been talking about the corner where they have to park their cars to pick up their kids. That is true, and they do. But Prestwick has two cul-de-sacs, of which a school bus can turn around in. Has anybody from Prestwick talked to the Wake County Transportation or School Board or anything like that about bringing the school buses down there? I don't think so. The pond, well, if you have, don't interrupt while I'm talking, okay? You get your chance in a minute. The pond was a Dr. Pearson's pond. He was a dentist. He owned all of Wellington. It was never, ever, ever an overflow pond, ever, not one time. When the overflow began was when Ford Motor Company built up the street. That was when it started. Okay, now here's a new little thing that I don't think Prestwick has thought about. At the bottom of Stevens Road, where I live, it is on y'all's map, has been for like ten, twelve years, a future road that will run right into Stevens Road. Now, that's a whole nother ballgame. It's not a little road, it is a long road. The other thing is they're talking about school overload. Everybody in Wake County knows that we have a school overload, not just in Cary, but in Raleigh, in Apex, in Fuqua, and everywhere. We're growing. We are a growing area. And the school overload has nothing to do with Stevens Road. Granted, eighty houses are not, or sixty, or however many it is, is not going to overload the schools in any way. Several years ago, the new members won't remember this, but another developer came in, and I don't know if Mr. Keller is still here, but another developer came in, and Prestwick had already been built, and he wanted to put thirty, thirty, three, zero, houses on that land. They raised cane. They did not want thirty houses. The other thing is, is that my house recently had, oh my God, I got to call fast, had a tree fall through it. Has anybody noticed for the last four months that my house has been completely rebuilt, and that trucks have been coming up and down, bulldozers, backhoes, and everything else down Stevens Road? Nobody's complained to me about it, not one word. The other thing about Stevens Road, they say it's too narrow, but the people on Prestwick park on Stevens Road. They park their cars there. They leave their cars there overnight. This is road is too little, but they they are allowed to park on it. The other thing is, is that Stevens Road has been approved for water and sewer, of which comes up, I think, to Craig, which I don't know, but to Craig's house. It is approved and ready to come down to our house at the bottom of the hill where the water comes. So I really don't know what these people want. I have no clue. Cary is going to develop, and Lord knows, we could have professional building, we could have, I don't know, school. We could have many different things on that piece of property. I hate watching this clock on this piece of property, but we're going to grow, and there's no reason for thirty people or however many live in Prestwick to block everything, and they've already blocked the thirty. So what are they going to block next? What are they going to block next?
Jenny, you know what was going to happen. That light just got red, and I got to ask you to to end your comments.
Sir?
The timer just went off on you.
Oh, it did? I'm looking at it. Oh, it just went five. Okay. Sorry, buddy. Have a good one.
You bet.
My name is John Woodliffe. I live at one oh five Linville River Road here in Cary. I'm the engineer working with the applicant on this proposal. The applicant has been working closely with the adjacent landowners and neighbors in Prestwick subdivision, as well as the Wellington Park subdivision. And you've heard the discussion regarding the existing pond in the Wellington Park subdivision, and that pond has an approximately two hundred and seventy acre watershed that drains to it. This site actually only represents about only represents about five percent of that watershed. So when you're hearing about the issues that that pond is actually seeing today, you know, the the impact that this site will have on it is five percent with respect to the overall drainage. And as you see in the staff report, the applicant has has heard the concerns of the neighbors and has agreed to increase the stormwater management for this site to the twenty-five year storm event to try to help alleviate the concerns of the downstream residents in Wellington. The second subdivision, which is the Prestwick subdivision, actually lies south of Stevens Road, and that subdivision actually lies in a different watershed than this site. So any rainfall that would land in this site would actually drain in the opposite direction of Prestwick. So the concerns of Prestwick are primarily external to this site. But to be to be good neighbors, we, the applicant, has been working with Prestwick to to understand their drainage situation and to see if there's any way that he can work with them to alleviate their drainage problems in conjunction with this construction project. As part of that, the applicant has pointed out to the residents that currently Stevens Road, the entire section drains towards Prestwick, which if during the if this development is if this rezoning is approved, the actual cross section, we will actually correct that, and half the road will then drain back towards our side, which will take up approximately half of the impervious surface that currently drains towards Prestwick. So in actual in actual volume, they should see a reduction in their actual stormwater volume based on if this project were constructed today. A second issue that comes up in many developments is the impervious surface that is added to the site. The impervious surface on this project is actually contained in a smaller area than would normally be allowed, because this site actually has an easement, Duke Energy easement running across the northern border, which is about one hundred and thirty-five feet wide, and it occupies about two and a half acres of the site. That area cannot be developed, which in that area would have to stay by default open space. And so that would by default limit the amount of impervious surface that would be proposed for the overall site. Those are the main issues that I wanted to address from a stormwater perspective. If there are any questions after the public hearing, I'd be happy to address those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for giving me the opportunity to talk here, and I live in the Prestwick neighborhood.
Let's start with your name.
Yes, I was about to say that. My name is Omar Khan, and I live in the Prestwick neighborhood.
If you repeat it one more time, my ears are a little waxy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking loud. My name is Omar Khan, O-M-A-R-K-H-A-N.
I appreciate that, because my hearing isn't getting any better.
No, I understand. It's not easy to get that name. Yeah, I understand that. Okay, so I live in the Prestwick neighborhood. I was not planning to talk here, but what was just said a few minutes ago, I just want to prove that it was not thirty homes. It was sixty, and we did not say no to thirty homes. If it is thirty homes, I can assure you, even though I haven't talked with all my neighbors, if it is thirty homes, we will, I'm sure we will approve it. We will not go against that. So I have a proof here. It was actually in, this was December eighteenth last year, and that was six in one acre, which is the same. So it was not thirty homes. That was my first point I wanted to make. That's not a true statement. And the second thing was regarding the the area itself, the Stevens Road is is not just capable, the infrastructure is not there. There's no way it can handle one hundred and ten homes plus the twenty single-family homes that are coming up besides the homes that are already there. So it is just not feasible. I don't even understand how can it be safe, safe for emergency vehicles coming in? If there's one fire truck standing there on the Stevens Road, or if that road is blocked, nobody can get in there. And you are talking about like altogether at least two hundred, two hundred and fifty homes there, if you add everything up. The current homes, the one-ten plus the nineteen, it's going to go way over two hundred. And how can we allow such a big development to come in there with the, it's definitely a safety issue? Now, if we are opening the other road, as far as traffic, that's not going to decrease it, it's going to increase it, because if you look, the highway is from the Stevens to, what is it, the Piney Plains. That's the way people will go out. So it's going to increase the traffic. It's not going to decrease the traffic there. And there's hardly, two cars can barely pass there right now, so it's not possible for them to, you know? I mean, it's just not capable. The infrastructure is not there. That's my first point. And the second thing, that was my second point. The third thing is cars parked on Stevens. There's only one car, one of my neighbor parks there, and I know him, and that's fine, but there's only one car parked there on Stevens. There's no other car parked there. It's always empty. So even with that, you have to be careful when you're driving by there. And the third thing is about the schooling. There are neighbors in Prestwick who had to send their kids to a different school because they were overcrowded. So we are saying, oh, eighty homes or hundred homes is not going to make a difference? How is it not going to make a difference? Even right now, there's a problem with with the people living there, and they don't have enough, you know, seats in the school. They cannot just go into those schools. And so again, to summarize, I'm not against it. It's going to happen. It's a great place, and everybody wants to live in the area. So but the point is the density, and if we can decrease the density, it would definitely go pretty smooth. Thank you. I appreciate it.
My name is Carlos Cirque, and I own the property of twenty-one oh four Piney Plains in Cary. I basically want to let you know that I support the project. I think it will be very good for the development and for the prizes on our property. We stand on the on the entrance of Piney Plains. So what you've been talking about, car traffic and every, we've seen it. But I think with the proper, what they plan to do with the, from the stairs, sorry, it's coming out of the cold, and I think it will help our property and the property of our neighbors. I really do believe I'm a businessman, and I do believe in the development of our community here in Cary. It will bring a lot of work, also in construction. So when we prepare a site for construction, we park, by answering some questions of our neighbors, we park in the site. We put our dumpsters in the site. So as far, and I really don't know how they plan to do it, but I think regarding the construction site, I'm in the construction site every day, and I don't think that will be a problem for our community and for our homes there. So for that, for the jobs it will create, and for the positive impact that it will have in the water that we have talked about, that they have talked about, I do believe that we should support this project. And again, we are at the entrance of Stevens Road, so it will affect us directly. But again, I would like for for you to support this as well as we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda Stoppin Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, both the property owner and I am working with Michael Dean Chadwick on the the rezoning. What I'd like to do, hopefully I'm the last one, if not, I sort of want to wrap things up and answer some of the comments or respond to some of the comments that were made. First of all, I want to point out that in discussions that we've had on the wetlands on the site, we obviously know that we have to deal with any wetlands. We will follow the the state regulations. We will not touch or go into them, so we understand the implications of wetlands. Number two, I want to point out that with the residential rezoning that was approved down the road on Stevens Road and with the development plan that's being reviewed or going into the town, Forest Parkway, the road that connects through to Wellington is going to be connected. I thought it was important to bring that up. Construction traffic, the construction traffic will be coming in and out of our site. Obviously, it will have to use Stevens Road, but we will follow, or the developer will follow, all the Town of Cary requirements for construction traffic and any other hours of operation for building or those kinds of things, so they understand that they have to do that. As far as Stevens Road, the portion of Stevens Road adjacent to our property will be, we will be improving that portion. It will include curb and gutter, sidewalk, a bike lane. There was a comment made at the public hearing for council that, you know, it would be nice if if development occurred with every property in a row, but that usually doesn't happen. But this does provide a section of Stevens Road that will go in, and hopefully, over time, the remaining portions of Stevens Road will be improved, but this is one section that will be improved. Also want to point out that Duke Energy, there is a utility easement on roughly two and a half or so acres within our property, and although this is not a zoning condition, between that and the areas that are not developed, approximately seventeen percent of this site will remain undeveloped. What I really want to touch on right now is the land use plan, the density that you can see on the plan, and why certain things have happened the way they have in this area. Prestwick had the same medium density designation that this property has. When the developer came in to rezone the property by choice, he chose to develop it with a single-family detached product with a lower density, but that was a choice that he made. On the Keller property, as you see on the land use plan, it is MDR. In your staff report, the property to the north and the east is zoned land for office, and it's, for those of you that know that case, it took a while to get there, because it started out with with one use, but it was approved for office. It's a multi-story office building, quite intense. So in our opinion, and I'll get to the density in a minute, but the the medium density category is an excellent transition for the north and the east that is currently approved with zoning with a high intensity office. To the west, you have, basically, this is the demarcation line on the land use plan to go from medium density to low density. We have got a forty-foot type A buffer that will be provided along our property line and that type A is opaque, so it will be an opaque buffer. The density for medium is three to eight. The density for medium is three to eight. Not to debate a point that was made earlier. The applicant had all intentions of going in, and he wanted eight units per acre. We then listened to the neighbors, and we went down to six units per acre. It is our opinion that six units per acre is not high-density. I know some people may see it as high, but six units per acre is a little bit higher than the average of between three and eight. But we do feel that the density that we're proposing is appropriate. We limited it to 80 units. Townhomes is a use permitted in MDR. As Ms. Granton pointed out, we are meeting or exceeding certain requirements in the LDO with our zoning conditions. And we do believe that this request is the best use of the property. And I too am here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us on this case? Anyone? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case for board questions.
Actually, I have a question for staff.
Please.
So there's been a lot of talk about a connector. It sounds like it's going into Stevens Road. I was wondering if you could talk about the timeline and status of that?
We do not have any capital projects. That's driven by development. So that is something that would take place. The Forest Park connection-
Correct, yes.
Depends on when the site plan is approved, which is in review. So it could be in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as this portion of Stevens Road connecting to Wellenborough, that's something that would be driven by development. So there's no development plans or rezonings for the property at the end of Stevens Road at this time.
So either way, it would not be a capital improvement for the town?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Carla.
Yeah.
I bet you had your hand up first.
When I looked at the site, it was kind of hard to tell because there's a lot of forest there. But it looked like there was a pretty steep slope at the back. I'm wondering how much of this property is actually developable? They mentioned the Duke Power easement, which is 2.5 acres. But I'm wondering if-
Those are things that we'll have to look at the site plan to determine. We don't have a topography study.
Okay. Because what I'm getting at is, you know, when you talk about density and you talk about three to eight units per acre, you know, you're talking about the total acreage, whether it's buildable or not.
Correct.
So people's vision of, you know, six units per acre is that there's going to be six units on an acre, which might not be true. If half of that acreage is wetlands or Duke Power easement or steep slope, then you could end up with 12 units on a particular acre. Because you're approving an overall density. So, you know, when I look at this area, you know, I think that's important. You've got a lot of very rural setting. You've got single-family homes. It's not real clear to me exactly what the impact would be. And MDR covers a fairly, you know, covers three to eight units per acre. So that's something to consider. It would be, if the developer does have that information, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Yeah, John, why don't you-
And while he's walking down, I just want to make one comment. This is great. Whoever did this, thank you.
Jonathan, Michael.
To address your question about the amount of property, of the property would be developable. The property is, in a way, it's divided into two different parcels, if you will. The parcel that is north of the Duke Energy easement would be devoted exclusively to stormwater detention. And that part, that's the piece that would have the most topo on it. The portion that is south of the Duke Energy easement, which would be where the lots would be, from a topo standpoint, is actually relatively, is a relatively graceful slope. So it's not, so most of that property would be developable.
Do you have an acreage rough estimate? How much could be developed or will be developed?
Approximately 60% of the property could be developed.
Buck, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been a lot of discussion about Stevens Road and its ability and capacity to serve development in this area. Deborah, are there any plans for any upgrades or enhancements of Stevens Road from the-
No, the development of Stevens Road is driven by the private development that comes in. That's when we get the road improvements.
Okay, but nothing from the town?
The town does not have any projects. That's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
So just to follow up on my question, I'm calculating over here. So that's eight acres that would be developed in 80 units. So we're really talking about 10 units per acre.
No, we always look at the gross acreage for all development in Cary.
Well, I mean, but physical units could-
Right, and we don't-
You would have up to 10 within, you would have an average of 10.
But consistently-
You're only going to develop eight acres, and you're getting 80 units.
Consistently with all development in Cary-
Sure.
We take into consideration the gross acreage-
Of course.
Because every project has roads, stream buffers, perimeter buffers.
I'm not arguing-
So it does, right.
That it's not, doesn't fit within the MDR. I'm simply saying, for people who are trying to envision what this will look like, then, you know, it's not six units on one physical acre. You know, when you talk about R40, you have an actual boundary. You've got, you know, you've got a certain width and a certain depth. In this case, you're just kind of averaging across them.
Hang on a second. I think we had some other questions here. I just want to give everybody a chance. Somebody down here?
Oh, I'll wait for her to finish her thoughts.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay, I guess we referred to you, Carla.
That might have been it, actually. That was, the road improvements are only going to be in front of this property. They're not going to be all the way out to Piney Plains, correct? So the road improvements in front of this property really aren't going to address the issues of the school buses at the corner of Piney Plains and Stevens.
Right. The applicant has requested to comment to that, if you would like to hear from the applicant.
Okay, yes, sure. I got to have you come down and talk into the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Law says it all has to go on a recorder somewhere.
Again, my name is Michael Dean Chadwick. And on the school bus issue, it's actually a tremendous improvement because the school buses will now be able to pull into a community, go in throughout the townhome community. And if they'd elect not to do that and to come down Stevens, they'll now be able to go through Forest Park and out through Wellington. None of those possibilities exist today. So it's really a big improvement for the school buses. Thank you.
I was actually thinking more about the width of the road, but yeah.
Other questions?
In looking at this aerial view, I almost get the impression that maybe half, perhaps more than half, for the north side of Stevens will be new road construction. Is that an erroneous conclusion?
That you're referring to the handout from the citizen?
Yes. If you take that 19 new homes.
The subject property of the rezoning with the 19 new homes was these two lots here?
Are they contiguous to one another, first of all?
This area, that is correct.
Yeah.
It was these two parcels here.
From that, from that new road connection up to the northern end of the proposed development of these parcels, all of that road will be widened, will be leveled off to the west, and curb and gutter will go in there.
The applicants, when there is a development plan approved, are responsible for improving their half of the road and meeting town standards with widening right-of-way dedication and curb and gutter. But yet, there are gaps. That has been one of the concerns. The properties in between the development that was approved last December and the property that's the subject of discussion tonight, there are two lots in here.
Oh, okay, so it's not-
It's not contiguous.
Okay. I do recognize, I've been down this road several times to just sort of look at what's going on. There does seem to be an awful lot of on-street parking, at least in my mind, for what is a narrow road. Sort of sounds as if some of the problems are neighborhood-generated. This community that lives on this street could petition the city to improve this road, right?
I'm going to ask Mr. Jensen to speak to that. Okay.
Can a neighborhood get together and say, we'd like to have you put in curb and gutter and have some improvement to this street to address these issues of congestion that they feel they have?
We do have a provision in the town code that does allow for a petition process. But that requires participation by percentage of the homeowners out in the neighborhood themselves. Generally, what we've done, though, is waited as development occurs that they would do those improvements along the way. So it's very rare that we have a petition project in Cary to do widened streets primarily because residents along that road have to pay for the improvements. So.
But maybe half of this road is already going to be developed?
Certainly. And again, you know, it is a collector road. On the town's conference planning, certainly residents can, during the budget hearing process, they could certainly make their feelings known about having a capital project to do it.
Now, the lady that lived at the end of Stevens, Mr. Jensen, she was mentioning about that being an area where there's going to be an extension, an additional connection.
Sure. If you see on the map in front of you that's on the screen, there's a dotted line. That's, there is a future extension that would go over to-
Wellenborough?
To Wellenborough Drive. Yeah, there's a traffic circle there at that point.
What triggers building that extension?
Again, it's on our comprehensive transportation plan. So as, it's a guide for as development occurs in the area. It gives them an indication that if it impacts their property, they would extend the roadway. The same thing with the thoroughfare widening. If it's on our comprehensive plan, our expectation is that they would build it, if they develop their property. But we don't have, we do not have any funding set as a priority in our tenure capital improvement program to do anything in this particular area.
Okay, thank you.
While you're there, Mr. Jensen, what is the process to put, like, no parking signs up on that road? Because, like Mr. Rogers, I've been down there several times, and it is very crowded. There's a lot of cars parked on that road.
If the citizens live along that roadway, if they have concern about parking, then we would generally contact our office, and we would do a study to see how severe a problem it was. We'd have input from both police, fire, and other departments within the town. And if there was a recommendation that there was a safety issue or where parking, eliminating parking maybe on one or both sides would be justified, then that action would have to be considered by the town council to put a restriction on that street. So it's something that we could certainly entertain. They can just contact the town's Transportation Facilities Department. We'll be glad to look into that if they care to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Well, I guess it's time to talk about stormwater. And I have a number of questions. And if I, in any way, sound like I'm putting words in the applicant's mouth, just stop me, or if I'm talking about something that's kind of beyond our scope. But from what I've heard in the public hearing, there's, at least my take is that this project will somehow alleviate existing stormwater problems to residents downstream of this.
We have no information to be able to speak to that. That is something that's been discussed privately. We don't have the engineered drawings. We don't have the stormwater plans. All of those are things that we look at at site plan and would pertain just to this property.
Right.
So this is what we've, there have been some discussions with adjacent property owners about private contractual agreements. Those cannot be incorporated as part of the rezoning case that just applies to this property. They have to mitigate their stormwater management to pre-existing conditions. They have requirements that they have to meet. They can offer a zoning condition that exceeds the town standards, but just for this parcel.
Exactly.
So.
And so they go to pre-development conditions. If, as one of the folks in the public hearing mentioned, this large automotive facility upstream is, with all its impervious surface, creating a lot of runoff, that will go through this property. Would that be considered a pre-development condition that they would not have to mitigate and still meet the requirements?
We have someone who can speak to that a little bit.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Flynn. I'm actually in the Stormwater Section of Water Resources Department. They're actually only responsible for the footprint of their project. Offsite water that they're accepting, they're not responsible to mitigate. Our requirements are designed not to exacerbate or create new drainage problems. It's not designed to mitigate existing. We have different programs. If you have flooding, in structural flooding, council has programs to address that. And they can always petition for those types of things if they have structural flooding.
Okay, so we're almost there.
Right.
So the idea, then, is that any impervious surface that is created by this particular development, they would have to do their own best management practices, ponds and the like, and deal with it. But not anything that they're getting uphill, upstream, coming their way.
That's correct.
They wouldn't have to deal with that. And so we, by we, I mean the town, would have no ability to enforce anything like that. They're just required to be responsible for their own property and nothing else.
That's correct. Our requirements are actually an order of magnitude greater than state requirements. We had a private study done in 2008 by a private engineering firm to try to figure out what the best storm to mitigate would be for our community in an urban setting. And after the 10-year storm, has found that the cost benefit really dropped off significantly.
And if I can ask one last question, and it's about wetlands. Someone had mentioned very early on the existence of wetlands on this property. Yet, in our documentation, it says there is no indication of floodplain or wetland areas on the site. Do we verify that before we go forward?
They'll have to verify, the engineer will verify that. That's a question we ask. They'll have a jurisdictional wetland determination made by the Army Corps of Engineers and by Division of Water Resources if they have jurisdiction. And then before any site plan is approved, any permits from those agencies would be required.
That answered everything. That's just fantastic. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Wally's here. May I ask one question?
Yeah, Wally's there still?
He can, is it on this topic?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, but my understanding is that they're talking about the 25-year flood limit. And we know that, you know, I'm not 100 years old, but I've seen at least two or three 100-year flood events. So just want to point out that they're only mitigating to pre-development conditions for up to the 25-year flood, right? So if it were over that-
They're only required to mitigate to the 10-year storm.
But they've offered 25, right?
If that's the case, yes.
I believe that's in there.
Yeah, it's risk management, statistical, statistically, it's got, a 25-year event has a 4% chance annually. A 100-year storm has a 1% chance annually. So we had an outside engineering firm kind of go through that. And after the 10-year, we saw a significant drop in the cost benefit with respect to mitigation. We found it to be a very effective ordinance, in fact.
Just one more clarification. So the site, they have to be responsible for the water on their site. But now if they take additional half of that road and slant it toward them, they'll be getting more water. So they're taking on additional responsibility? And is that going to go into?
We require them to mitigate road widening. This is in a protected watershed. It's in the Swift Creek watershed. It's actually one of the most highly regulated watersheds in the area. They're required to capture and treat all of their impervious for pollutants, total suspended solids, nutrients.
Including that widening of the road and regrading it toward them?
They'll be capturing the road widening. They're responsible to capture that and treat it. And if they can't, let's say the grade doesn't allow for it, then they would have to capture and treat an otherwise exempt impervious. So it's a wash.
Other questions? If not, I'm going to ask, just, did you have one?
I've got one now.
Go ahead. Go for it.
Question for the developer. The community has indicated that they're not happy with the six. Did they ever give you any kind of a consensus as to what number was acceptable to them? Or is this just kind of an unanswered question?
I too have a hearing issue. Could I ask you to repeat the question, please?
Sure, no problem. Several people have indicated they're not happy with the six in terms of the density. Did they ever give you a number that represented any kind of a consensus for the- Did they ever give you a number that represented any kind of a consensus for the people that live on that street as to what they would find acceptable?
I actually have never gotten anything from anybody that actually lives on Stevens Road. I have gotten communications from folks in Prestwick that range anywhere from "don't do anything and make it a park" to "it should be single families." The one speaker, I believe she said it was like 107 units that we originally started with. And when you take 27% of your project and lop it off, that's it. You know, we don't have anywhere else to go. And with significant improvements, and to the stormwater issue, I would like to say we have almost doubled the size of our stormwater pond to capture the very thing that is happening off our property so that we can get that water under control as well. Thanks.
And I just wanted to ask one question. Mr. Jensen, I'm going to bring you back up again. We heard that there wasn't a traffic study required, and I think those of us on the board know why, but could you help others understand why there was no traffic study? And then I'm going to ask you the aggregation thing that I
Okay, great.
I want to talk to the council when I report this.
For a standalone property rezoning, we look at the traffic potential for just the boundary of the rezoning property. That's the way our code defines the need for a traffic study. In this particular case, the use and intensity they're proposing on its property, as long as it does not generate more than 100 peak hour trips, then they are exempt from having to do a town-initiated traffic study through our on-call consultants. They still have to, as part of their rezoning case, you can use traffic concerns as part of your deliberation and approval process. So don't let that deter you from looking at other factors other than just a traffic study. And sometimes rezoning applicants will provide their own expert testimony about traffic in itself. As far as looking at the cumulative impacts on a roadway, again, we look at it, in this particular case, since it's on our comprehensive transportation plan, that it will be a collector avenue while at its full buildout, then based on the intensity in the area, the Collector Avenue is something we feel, once it's built out and its ultimate section and connection, that width of Collector Avenue would suffice for the area. But we don't look at it as a rezoning from an accumulated-type aspect unless a specific traffic study is required by our code. Does that help?
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? In that case, we need a motion.
I move that the board forward case number 14-REZ-23 Keller Property to Town Council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation. I think it is a good transition from the current areas to the north and to the east, moving into more of a residential area. I think the townhomes will...
Before you give your rationale, can we see if we have a second?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Usually the process is we get a second, and then you get to tell us why.
You have it, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second now.
Now I can hear that, okay. I think the transition is a good transition. I think, yes, there's going to be some problems with the construction and red clay, but I think everybody, whether there's, regardless of the density, there are going to be a construction, a little messiness with the clay. I think it actually might help with the water and the stormwater areas. And I agree that this traffic study issue is often tricky, but given the fact that it's close enough to the edge of the street, and I think they're actually improving and maybe even providing more parking areas for people to put their buses, when the bus comes, to actually park a little bit further down on the road where it's widened, might actually help that situation. So therefore, I think that I would ask that this be approved.
You second it?
Yes.
Get to speak, Zach.
I did second it. And I did with a great eye towards density. And the thing is, this is in, along with our plan, it's in alignment. And these types of units fit in this type of area. I understand there's single-family homes nearby, but there's also other types of zoning nearby as well. And in terms of transition, this is the kind of thing that's put together and thought about when these plans are developed. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that very early on, we were told that there was a considerable amount of give and take between the applicant and the surrounding neighbors. I think he said something on the tune of 20 hours. And you don't see a lot of people show up and speak in favor, unless there has been a lot of discussion like that, good, bad, or indifferent. And I don't know what happened in those discussions. But what I do want to say out here on the record is, we don't, it's not on us what happens in those discussions. If promises are made, and again, I'm going back kind of to the stormwater, because I just heard a few moments ago that we're trying to use a larger BMP than required to alleviate some of the other problems. So if, I just want to say, if any of those things that were done in a private meeting were, agreements were made, they're beyond the scope and the enforcement of us. But for what I've seen, I don't have a problem with voting for this.
Thank you. Other comments?
I too will support this project as proposed, Mr. Scher. Certainly, I'm sensitive to the various concerns that the local residents presented here today. But as previously stated, there is development going to occur here. It's certainly one of the prime areas for development right now. And the project that's proposed does provide that transition from the single-family residential to higher-density residential and commercial that's already coming up along Piney Plains road area there. So given that, and the obvious work that the developer has attempted to do, and the gains that were made with the residents there, I would support the project.
Carolyn?
I'm not going to support the motion. I don't dispute that townhomes might be the appropriate thing, and that medium-density residential is probably the correct land use designation. There's a lot of things that were talked about that, you know, are beyond our control, although, you know, I do have some concerns if there were things promised that are not in the rezoning, because they can't be, that someone is able to follow up on them. But, you know, working within MDR, you know, the next question is, what is the appropriate density within that? And there's a pretty wide range. It's three to eight units. And I feel like six is still on the high end when you consider how low-density some of these other properties are. And, you know, they may choose to stay, they may not. It is still, even if it came in at the lower end, it's still going to raise their property values. Some people may not appreciate that when tax time rolls around, but, you know, I would like to have seen something a little bit less.
Other comments? Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about what this, we talked about MDR, medium-density residential, is, and why it is in our comprehensive plan that this property would be medium-density residential. What we like to do is, we have these things, activity, called activity centers, and Crossroads is one of our bigger ones. And what we like to do is put higher densities closer to our activity centers, because it puts more people close to places where they can shop or they can work. And so the idea is you want your higher densities closer to your activity centers, and then tapering the densities back from there. Well, it's likely that this site is going to be about as close to the commercial/office/institutional properties to the north as you can get. And so if you're looking for a transition from single-family to office, medium-density residential is what you pick. And that's what we did, I don't know, 10 years ago, comprehensive plan, when we did this? It's the Southeast Area Plan, right?
I'm sorry, I was taking notes.
Okay. We designated this MDR way back in the Southeast Area Plan, right?
Correct. It is in the Southeast Area Plan.
Which is over 10 years ago. So the point is that we envisioned that this kind of thing was going to go on this property 10 years ago. It's part of a much larger master plan. When you get...
It was 1998, the Southeast Gateway Area Plan designated it for three to six. And then with the adoption of the new Southeast Area Plan in 2004, retained the MDR designation, but the range was increased to three to eight in 2004. So you are correct, 10 years ago.
So the point is that back when we did this comprehensive plan, which is our roadmap, we weren't thinking single-family residential here. We were thinking something like townhomes or a little higher density. And so even though it may feel uncomfortable now, in terms of the master plan we developed years ago, it's a fairly good fit. I think that development of this property and the property a little farther along Stevens Road is going to improve some of the traffic issues. Obviously, it's not going to fix everything, because there's properties in between and farther along Stevens Road that aren't going to be improved yet. But I think this at least fixed part of it. And so frankly, I don't think the traffic is going to be rendered much worse by this particular case. I like the developer effort to work with the neighbors. Frankly, I wish we saw more of that in these cases. This developer has really worked hard. And I appreciate the fact that we're probably going to mitigate a little bit of the existing stormwater impervious surface runoff from the road, because it's now going to be tilted toward this development, and therefore, it's going to have to be managed within the development plan or within the site plan. So that said, are there other comments? That said, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Can I see your hands here? Okay. Opposed?
No.
Nay. So that motion carries seven to one. And we're going to move on to our next case, which I think you're still on the podium.
This next case for a public hearing is rezoning case 14-REZ-25, the Creech property, located at 1606 Kildare Farm Road on approximately 0.95 acres. Subject property is shown here, highlighted in yellow, north of US 1 and to the west of Kildare Farm Road. Aerial view of the property shows that it is developed with an existing detached residential dwelling. The land use plan designation is low-density residential, however, with its immediate proximity to office and institutional. I'd like to note that there is a key feature in the land use plan that allows consideration of the requested office and institutional zoning because of the boundaries being somewhat conceptual and not hard lines. So in the evaluation, the request for the rezoning was found to be consistent with the land use plan. The existing zoning on the property is residential 40, and the applicant has proposed office and institutional conditional use. At Town Council, staff presented the conditions offered by the applicant. At that time, that was to limit the building area to 6,500 square feet, limit the use to general office or medical office, and that any lighting fixtures on the property not be mounted taller than 25 feet. Property owners within 800 feet were notified of the proposed rezoning. There were two protest petitions, highlighted here in blue, because they were not within that 100-foot boundary of the property. They were not considered valid. We did note the concerns of the neighbors, and that was traffic on Kildare Farm Road and the impact of site lighting. The applicant has proposed new conditions. They kept the 6,500-square-foot minimum and limited the use. They've added a condition that there would be a minimum building setback of 60 feet from the northern and the western property lines. This would be adjacent to the McGregor Downs neighborhood. And they've also made the condition regarding site lighting more strict. They've limited the height now to 18 feet for any light poles or lights mounted on the building. And they've added a condition that any illuminated building signage would be limited to the side of the building facing Kildare Farm Road. According to Cary's GIS maps, the site is not impacted by any stream buffers. And there are no issues with parks or greenway trails in the immediate vicinity of the property. Subject property fronts Kildare Farm Road, 30-foot streetscape would be required. And there is an existing CTRAN fixed route on Kildare Farm Road. This concludes staff's presentation. Following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing, and we will begin by hearing from our applicant.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Topp with Glenda S. Topp &amp; Associates. I'm here tonight representing the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Creech. And I will be brief. As staff has pointed out, after the public hearing and with comments that were made, we did revise the zoning conditions to address concerns that were raised by some of the property owners. We addressed lighting. We added a additional condition for building setback. We also addressed lighting on the building. In terms of the height of the lighting, a comment was made with what the adjacent property owner had done in a previous case, and we had our zoning conditions for that mirror, what had been done right down the street on the Kiesler property. Just briefly, as we all know, this area has changed. There's been a lot of non-residential rezonings in the area. We've seen expansion in the hospital. Just a couple of weeks ago, the Town Council approved the assisted living site plan for a portion of the Kiesler property. So the area has seen a great deal of change. The Creeches have lived in this property or in the house since 1975. And they especially have seen a lot of change. Were they in favor of this change? No, not necessarily. They did come to our meetings when we were looking at the Kiesler rezoning. They voiced their concerns. But as we all know, those zoning cases were approved. They've been impacted by increased traffic. They've been impacted by the expansion of Kildare Farm Road, which was obviously a two-lane section when they moved in. And of course, it's much wider today, which has been an impact. This property is not part of McGregor Downs. It's a freestanding piece of property that has access only off of Kildare Farm Road, which is another reason why we feel the zoning to conditional use O and I is appropriate to minimize the impact to the surrounding area, which the Creeches understand is important, because they themselves had concerns with some of the rezonings around them. We limited the square footage of the office building, which we felt was extremely important. And of course, the uses that are allowed with this rezoning are also very limited. Again, that was done to ensure whatever does go here would have minimal impact. And I also want to point out that the code does require a 40-foot Type A buffer along the adjacent property, boundaries between this property, if it is to be rezoned, and the residential property. We believe that is the best use of the property, and we would ask for the board's support. I'm here to answer any questions, and I know that Mrs. Creech is also going to speak to the board tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to open the public hearing to others that would like to address this case.
Mayor and council, Town Council members, my name's Rose Creech. My husband and I live... My husband and I live at what was 1802 Kildare Farm Road, now 1606 Kildare Farm Road. If you recall at the November meeting, I was here and did address this council, and thank you for the opportunity to come again. Tonight, I would just like to tell you a little bit about my life in Kerry. My husband and I moved to Kerry in 1973 with four children. We purchased a home in Walnut Hills. Wasn't long after that we learned this home was not exactly the one for our family's needs. We realized that in order to do that, we needed to build a home. So we went and we purchased our house plan for one of Kerry's own, Jerry Miller. We then chose land, looking around Kerry, where could we build? Kildare Farm Road was a very good option at that time. My husband wanted each child to have their own room. So that's, that was our house plan's goal in time. We, then we decided to find the land. We found the land in December of 1975. Polly and Clyde Kiesler had an acre of land on Kildare Farm Road, which we purchased in 1975. In April of 1976, we moved. At that time, we paid for our private garbage collection. We paid for Wake County taxes, and we lived in the Y-Rack Fire Department. Since that time, we have seen a lot of growth in the area. We have seen the Kerry, the Kerry-Wake Meds, excuse me, I worked at Rex Hospital, so, for 37 years, I want to say. I have seen the Kerry Hospital developed. I have seen the graveyard, which was the Atkinson family graveyard. By the way, they were real good neighbors. They were moved. And we have seen many subdivisions and other development in Kerry. And we, we will not benefit at all in our lifetime, in our time, from this rezoning because we plan to live there. But we only have the future in mind for our children. And I do ask you to please consider that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us?
Hello, my name's Brian McHenry. I'm a 35-plus-year resident here since college. And I've lived, I live on a property that is adjacent to the proposed rezoning. And I'm here with my neighbor, Reyes up there at the top, the Ayer family that also is... The reason I give you that, you kind of can ignore the first page and just look at the pictures on the second page because speaking with them, the developers, we know that there's a 40-foot opaque buffer. That was one of our first concerns is, you know, having a buffer between residential and, and this commercial would be very important. And then, but secondly, the, the thing that you can see on that one diagram is that these two houses, we have probably the smallest properties on McGregor. And we're facing this property, which yes, I know in, in Rose's lifetime, she says she's not going to change it, but that leaves us in a kind of untenable position because that means we're going to have a property with zone commercial with no plans for it. In other words, if they had a plan for it and they were coming to you saying, "We want to rezone it because we're going to do this with it," but now to just have it that when we go to sell it, someone's going to look at it and say, "Well, you've got commercial behind you. What's going to go on? And when's the construction going to start?" And stuff. So we're almost wondering whether one of the conditions they could put is that they put in the buffer now. So then whoever, if either one of us wants to move, we don't have the situation of there's going to be this commercial development going on behind us over, at some unknown time in the future. The, one of the main points I made in the beginning page is that there is 14 res... Let me get my glasses. 11 res 13. And all I, we really ask is that all those conditions be, or that are applicable, be also put on, on this. The only thing was that they actually addressed the opaque buffer, but I guess by the rules, the opaque buffer is required. And I guess the next rezoning that's coming up after this is the Hannah property. And on these diagrams here, they don't mention the R40 is, is for both this and the Hannah property. And so the question there again is, you know, if Hannah does develop and put in, I think his proposal is put a house, then we're going to have a commercial here and a commercial there, or not a house, but a house-like business. You know, how are we going to control what they might put in behind us? So it's kind of one of those, they want to rezone. I can understand why she'd like to do that for her next generation, but for us, from the moment you rezone it, what does that do to our property value and our ability to sell our properties if and when we want to move? Neither of us want to move anytime soon either, but having that change without any plan of action is one of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Reyes, and I reside at, I don't know, you have a picture. I reside at 101, my family and I. And I just want to reiterate what Mr. McHenry said. If they are putting in the Hannah property, which is supposed to be, I believe, a house-like business, we've been trying to figure out how the parking is going to go. And if there's commercial on the other side, who's to say that all three of these properties together don't just come together after they've been rezoned to put in a larger development? Because that's all, three commercial properties all adjacent to each other. And if that happens, the 40-foot buffer for us, we would request that it be, that it was to be put in before construction happened because otherwise our backyard butts up right against this. There's no tree line or anything in between. So all that construction, traffic noise and on a commercial property would not be a short time. It would be a long time, excavating and everything. And the second concern that we both have is, I just want to reiterate what Mr. McHenry said. If this gets rezoned, this is directly in our backyard. I don't know if you can look at the picture that actually had the trees in the house, and you can see how close our home is to their home. I haven't gotten out and measured it, but it can't be more than 50 feet. It's very close. So if they get rezoned and she does indeed live out the rest of her days...
Sir. Brian, it's her turn.
He was going to put the picture of the houses up for me that I was trying to do. I'm sorry, I don't know how to do it, but... I'm sorry. So what I was going to say is if it gets rezoned and she then lives out, you know, the next rest, I don't know, 20 years of her life or whatever, and we go to sell our property in three years, five years, whatever, or in a year, who knows? How are we going to put it on the market with an unknown commercial directly in our backyard? It's already been rezoned for it. It's approved. Do you know what that's going to look like? No one's going to want to buy our home. And we're in McGregor Downs, so we have a terrible house now that we have completely rehabilitated. It was a foreclosure when we bought it. We have spent a lot of money rehabilitating this house, making it really a nice property. That is going to be a complete loss for our family. And it was ironic to me as she was saying all the problems that the Creeches are having because of this being rezoned with traffic and, you know, all the reasons she gave, that will now be our problem. I mean, I understand what she's saying for the Creeches, for it to be rezoned for her future children. But why not just wait and let her children do it and leave it as it is now residential so that our children, because we live there, we have children, can live a peaceful life in our backyard? They can run around and play and not have construction or the unknown happening in our backyard. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members. My name's Bill Daniel, William G. Daniel and Associates, 1150 Southeast Maynard Road. We've, we're involved in both these zonings. I'm speaking to the Creech zoning right now. We are civil engineers, and we've been involved in looking at the site and in developing the conditions. In hearing some of the conversations or some of the comments that were just made, I'd just like to clarify a couple of points if I could and make them an observation or two. The word "commercial" gets thrown out. And of course, you know, this is not commercial. It is O and I, and it's conditioned O and I, 6,500 square feet. So I feel that there is certainty associated with this rezoning. First off, as far as the future is concerned, yes, the Creeches want to continue to live there. They want to have some certainty about what it will be in the future. I personally think that there is a lot of merit to that for neighbors as well. Just because something is residential right now doesn't mean it's going to stay residential. And it's pretty obvious on Kildare Farm Road that it's not appropriate for it to remain residential long-term. This rezoning establishes conditions in a very limited scale that pretty well ensures anyone looking at buying a house in the vicinity, that yes, that's not what's going to be there in the future. The, the Creeches residents, if they're looking at that, that's probably not what's going to be here 50 years from now. But it's zoned O and I, and it's a very small building on O and I, 6,500 square feet. And as far as the other uses, I mean, it is an office building. It, there is, there, it is not commercial. There's a very real distinction between O and I and commercial, and this is office, O and I, which is a great transitional use. And when you look at the conditions of the site in that its only access is Kildare Farm Road, it has no association or relationship with the residential lots behind it in McGregor. And converting it to O and I with the proper buffer as legislated by the town and, and the ordinance, that, with the increased setbacks, in fact, one of the conditions has increased setbacks more than the town would require. I think all those are extremely positive. As far as implementing the buffer at this time, that really doesn't make sense to, to implement a 40-foot opaque buffer. If you look at that site, if you implemented a 40-foot opaque buffer, you, you would be drastically affecting the Creeches' residents right now. The, the landscape buffer is to be done, it's just logical that it be done in concert and as a part of the landscape plan that is prepared when the site is planned. The, the placement of materials within that opaque buffer, even though it will all be opaque, the, the placement of certain materials within that will be impacted or should be, if it's done appropriately. The, the placement will be impacted by where the improvements are proposed on that site and what the, the views are. I'd like to point out just one other thing. I know these are separate rezonings. They are side by side. But one of the very real impacts of, of these zonings is the, that 40-foot buffer that we've, that we've talked about. That is applicable from residential to O and I. The Hannah parcel is very small. The Hannah parcel is adjacent to the Creech property. The Creech property is zoned residential right now. If the Creech property remains residential and is not rezoned to O and I, the Hannah parcel, whether you approve the zoning or not, development of the Hannah parcel is impossible with a 40-foot buffer on it, as you will see when, if you look at the width of that, that's like. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? Saying no one approached the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case for board questions.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, one of the proposed zoning conditions are that the loose, the use would be limited to general or medical offices. I was just wondering if you could give maybe some examples or elaborate a little more on what would be considered under a general office type scenario?
You could have an insurance agency. You could have a real estate agency. You could have a tax financial planner.
Okay. All right, thank you.
With the 6,500-square-foot limit for the building, does that limit the amount of stories?
There is the ordinance limits the, the height of the building. And the building height is limited to 35 feet. So that, that's going to be somewhere probably no more than a two-story building.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one about the 6,500 square foot. It had been suggested that perhaps, and I know we're just talking about one zoning here, but it had been suggested that perhaps there would be a combination which would result in some sort of other, some other kind of use. Anything that departs from a single 65 maximum 100-square-foot building would require another rezoning, correct?
You are correct.
That's a zoning condition. So that's not a blank check for anything to be combined at this point. Just wanted to...
Correct.
Put that out there.
Other questions? Saying none, I need a motion.
I have a motion.
Please.
I move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 25 to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report in presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second discussion.
Yes, my, my reasoning about this motion was that as evident in both the applicant's and the staff report, there's been a lot of changes in this area. It's definitely been an evolution with Kildare Farm Roads. I think the proximity to the other O and I in that area, it, it really makes sense to, to have this rezoned as that. I think the applicant's done a pretty good job of mitigating any of the outstanding circumstances. I think this was a, this is a good rezoning.
Buck, do you have something you want to say?
I do. As was just stated, Kildare Farms certainly over the years has developed more so to the, the commercial type of activities or office-type activities away from residential. And I think this is a continuation of it as the proximity to, to the other areas in, in hospital and medical offices certainly lends itself to the conditions that have been placed on this. I understand and hear the concern of the immediate or the adjoining property owners about what may happen there in the future, but I would just suggest that with the conditions that we have proposed for this site, it certainly does provide some structure for what may occur there in the future. So the future's not totally unknown as it may be if nothing happened till some years down the line. So I do support this.
Other comments?
I just have one brief one in that this is sort of exactly what we were hoping for in meetings past when we saw similar properties located nearby, hoping that they would show up at the same time so we could look at the whole thing holistically. And while we look at each individual case in and of itself, it's, it's nice to be able to, to see the, the whole lay of this, this land, so to speak, at one time. 11 REZ 13 kind of started the whole ball rolling, and, and I could see where this, this rezoning, while it does seem to me to be a little unusual in that we're just asking for the rezoning now without any other kind of plans, the fact that there is some safety built in with the individual 6,500-square-foot building, I think that gives us enough of a, a safety margin that if some other use is ever desired, it's got to come back through here. So for that reason, I think we're, we're okay.
And I'd like to just punctuate that. Once we rezone this, this could happen the next day, could happen 10 years from now. What we're doing is changing the conditions for development of this property. So it, it really isn't in our purview to worry about the when. We're worrying about the what here. And that's the real question we ought to be considering. Any other comments? In that case, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And now I guess we're going to do the Hannah property? And now, I guess we're going to do the Hannah property. Boy, you've been working hard lately, haven't you, Ms. Granton?
This is the property immediately to the south of the case you just heard. 1608 Kildare Farm Road on approximately .47 acres, highlighted here in yellow. The subject property is vacant. It does have a small family cemetery on the property. The land use plan designation is office and institutional. The current existing zoning is residential 20, and the applicant has proposed office and institutional conditional use. Presented to the Town Council were the conditions that the building area not exceed 5,000 square feet, that the use be limited to general and/or medical office, and that lighting fixtures not be taller than 25 feet. As with the last case, property owners within 800 feet were notified of the request. There was one protest petition submitted. The concern from that citizen was traffic on Kildare Farm Road and potential impacts on property values for residents on Kildare Farm Road. Since the Town Council public hearing, the applicant has retained the condition that limits the square footage to 5,000 square feet and the limit on use, and they've added a condition that would require a minimum building setback from the western property line to be 60 feet, and also to limit the height of lighting fixtures to 18 feet. And as with the previous case, you just saw a limit on building signage, if it's illuminated, to only be on the side of the building facing Kildare Farm Road. As with the Creech property, the site does not show any indication, according to our GIS maps, of any stream buffers or floodways. And there are no issues with Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources. Kildare Farm Road is still a thoroughfare, and there is still a transit route. And this concludes staff's presentation, and once again, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing and invite our applicant to be our first speaker.
I thought maybe I'd start off with a joke, but I'm not very good, but you're probably tired of seeing me. Good evening. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda's Top and Associates, and I'm here representing the property owner, Dr. Hannah. Staff has done an excellent job going over it. I will just hit on the high points. The property on the land use plan is designated for office. The proposed rezoning is for office. As was mentioned in the last case, there's been a lot of change in the area to the south and across the street. There's been rezonings to office and institutional. Of course, there's been the expansion of the hospital. And once again, we believe that the land use plan is appropriate in designating the site for office, and it is an appropriate transition to what's already been approved, and also, based on the zoning conditions, it's an appropriate transition to the residential areas that it's adjacent to. Based on comments that were made at the public hearing, changes were made to the zoning conditions. Again, the height of the lighting was lowered to mirror what was approved for the Creech rezoning. We also added a zoning condition for lighting of the building or signage on the building. And we added, excuse me, the additional setback that does exceed the requirements in the LDO, and that is in addition to the 40-foot buffer that is required. We do believe that the use of the property is most appropriate for office, as staff pointed out in their staff report. We do believe it is an excellent site for infill office. Just reiterating what was pointed out before, the square footage of this site or for this rezoning has been established. It can't be increased. If it does get increased, or there's a desire to increase it, again, it would have to go before council again for a rezoning. The property owner, Dr. Hannah, had something come up, so he was not able to be here. Just to say what I think he would have said, his intentions, although that's not a zoning condition, as you all probably know, he does have Cary plastic surgery across the street. What he wants to do is to move over here and have his practice in close proximity to where he is now. It was important for him to develop zoning conditions that were appropriate and would ensure that the surrounding area was protected. So, he was very willing to offer these conditions. And again, his limit on square footage really reflects what he needs for his purposes, for his medical practice. That concludes my presentation. We ask for your support and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'll invite others that want to address us on this case. I saw someone standing up, but I don't think he's coming down to the podium, so I'm going to assume that no one wants to talk to us. And I will close the public hearing and open this case up for board questions. I admit, this one looks a little bit deja vu, doesn't it? I mean, we've kind of talked this one out in the previous case. If we've got nothing else to add, does somebody want to give us a motion? And if you do, I'm going to ask you to use the little cue cards. We having fun here? Because I remember now that our attorney is probably going to get on my case if we don't use the right language.
I'll be happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board forward case number REZ 14 REZ 26 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second it. Sorry.
I think you had your hand up first. You got it.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. You want to tell us one?
Who is the second?
Whichever.
Nancy.
Thank you.
Well, as is kind of obvious here, this is almost a duplication of the first one, except we don't have a residential property adjacent to it. Simplistically, the statement that I made, the staff report, it's in the public interest, and it's reasonable. The office usage here replicates what is across the street. It's going to be adjacent to what we've already approved for the contiguous parcel. And I'm sure that the doctor is going to be a good tenant, a good occupant for the particular site, and would probably continue his practice there for a number of years. We don't know what's going to happen to the adjacent parcel in terms of whether that becomes office quickly or not, but I do think that this is one of our least complex cases and should be approved.
I also support it. I think it's the best use for the land, and I appreciate that there is a cemetery on the property, which, if it's relocated, would have to already follow existing procedures as outlined in the North Carolina general statute. So, I feel like that's also being addressed.
Other comments? We've kind of said it all. Do you have something?
Well, it's always uncomfortable to put something besides LDR next to LDR, but, you know, in the scheme of things, office is probably the most benign option. You know, it's the quietest. It's, you know, there typically no one there on weekends and at night. So, you know, I think this is one of the better options. It's not really feasible to think that these properties would redevelop as residential with Kildare being so busy, you know, the hospital there. So, you know, I think it's a good choice.
Seeing no other comments, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. And next, we're going to work, move on to the Dillinger PDD amendment, which is 14 CPA We get to see somebody else other than Ms. Granton. That's great.
Right, Deborah gets to go for three. I'll go for the next two. So, this is, we're shifting now from rezoning cases to comprehensive plan amendments, two of them this evening for public hearing. And this is a request to amend the plan for approximately 23 acres located on Piney Plains Road in southeastern Cary. And as you've probably already noticed in your staff report, this is one of the more thoroughly evaluated plan amendment cases that's come before you in many months, so please bear with me as I move stepwise through this extensive presentation. The site is located on the southeast side of Piney Plains and Dillard, immediately west of the Centrum Shopping Center. This is a zoomed-out view. So, zooming in a bit, this is a closer perspective aerial view looking to the north, so you can see the site in relation to the Centrum Shopping Center, Lowe's Home Improvement, Target and Mail notification sites hearing was sent to all the properties shown in yellow on this map within 800 feet of the property. And according to our GIS maps, there is a stream buffer that bisects the site. You can see it here, moving roughly north to south. This is, in fact, the northernmost reach of Spate Branch, and it flows south to the lake below. And of course, as usual, precise determination won't be done until the time of development plan. According to the Parks and Greenways master plan, an extension of the Spate Branch Greenway is planned to traverse north to south to the site. This will provide connections heading west to Kids Together Playground, south to the lake, a trail around the lake, a future park site, and the Spate Branch Greenway. There's also a planned multi-use or street-side trail system traveling along Piney Plains and Dillard, providing connections to crossroads. According to the comprehensive transportation plan, both Piney Plains and Dillard are designated as major thoroughfares, each having four through lanes in total. The transportation plan also identifies the extension of a future collector roadway, Tryon Manor Drive, which is the dash blue line you see on the map. At present, C-Trans fixed route service is provided about 700 feet east of the site in front of the Centrum Shopping Center. And it's not shown on this map, but in fact, Triangle Transit Route 305 also serves, traveling right along Piney Plains Road, connecting Research Triangle Park with Cary and downtown Raleigh directly. The site is currently zoned as part of the Dillinger Plan Development District, and within the Dillinger Development District, the site is split into about a 12-and-a-half-acre office site, a 3.1-acre commercial site, and a 3.2-acre townhome portion. Future land use recommendations for this site are given by the Southeast Area Plan, adopted in 2004. That plan identifies the site as being part of the larger Crossroads Regional Activity Center, which is outlined in the bold magenta color you see on this map. So, the subject parcel here is the one indicated in the center left with the star on the site. So, we're going to zoom in a little bit now, and the vicinity, so you can see that the current land use plan reflects the zoning. The site is split into a three-acre commercial portion, about 13-acre office portion, and another three-acre medium-density residential portion. The applicant is requesting that the plan be amended so that the office and commercial portions are redesignated for medium-density residential. And as noted in the prior case, medium-density residential is defined as being housing at anywhere from three to eight units per acre. It can be small lot, single-family, up through townhomes. This slide compares how the site might develop under the current land use plan as opposed to the requested plan amendment. The current yield given in the gray column is taken from the current approved PUD, and the proposed use is taken from the associated rezoning case that you'll see in a couple Council public hearing was held on October 16th. At that meeting, councils raised some questions and had some requests. In particular, council asked for additional research and figures regarding nearby multifamily and townhome units for this area, that that be presented to the Board. They also had concerns and questions about the supply of office land for future development in the area, and asked that that be presented as well. The last two of the requests on this slide about typography and the planning history for Tryon Manor Drive, I'm going to, I'm available for questions on those. If you have questions for follow-up, the first two will take enough time of themselves, I think, and are the focus of the evaluation. So, in response to council's request that we look at housing in the area, Appendix A of your staff report explores this topic in some detail, basically breaking into three steps. The first step was to look at the search area, and the search area we defined as being what is walking distance to the shopping and office locations in crossroads. Those are shown in red and blue on this map. Normally, walking distance is defined as a half, as a quarter mile. A half mile is a very generous walking distance, still doable, you get some drop-off, so we rather aggressively went with the half mile. The second step in this analysis was realizing that crossroads is immediately adjacent to the Swift Creek Community-Sized Activity Center. It's the next size down, still a large activity center. And so, these two activity centers each have their, have housing within half-mile distances, so now we're showing both rings on the map. And the third and final step was then identifying all of the multifamily, that's apartment and condo projects, that's inside of either of those activity centers, half-mile walking distance buffers, and the townhomes. So, the multifamily is shown in the dark brown on this map, and townhome projects or small lot, single-family are shown in the more light brown-yellow color. So, in summary, when we add all this up, this slide shows you how much housing is supporting crossroads, how much is supporting the Swift Creek Community Activity Center, and the total combined. So, when you kind of look at this adjacent mashed-together area as a whole, we have about 3,200 apartment, condo, and townhome units within walking distance of the combined centers, plus the 500-plus hotel rooms. So, using those housing counts, we recalculated some of the housing metrics for the area, and we compared them against the recommendations in the land use plan. The crossroad center taken by itself, it's within an acceptable range of housing ratios, though at the low end, but Swift Creek is very much at the high end. So, you take the two centers, balance them together, and we think altogether, there's ample housing serving the two combined centers with or without the proposed amendment. The proposed amendment makes very little difference in the housing supply. So, the second question raised by council concerned the current situation regarding office land supply and loss of office land. This slide compares the metrics for commercial space that is shopping and retail, office space, and office space metrics against the town's land use plan. In the second column, the gray column, these are the figures that the land use plan says are the ranges we should be looking at. In the third column, the gold-colored column, we show build-out of the center as we've projected it without changing the plan at all. And in the final column, the green column, we look at build-out if we take the changes. The bottom line here is this, that we're doing great on commercial space. We did, in the prior slide, we saw we're really fine on the residential space. Office in the crossroads area is a little bit on the low side. The land use plan suggests that 35% to 75% of all of the non-residential space should be office. Ideally, you want a hidden minimum of at least 40%. We're barely over, without changing the plan, we'll barely meet the 35% target, and we still don't meet the ideal minimum of 40. And with the planned amendment, we would fall even worse and aggravate that, the office situation a little bit further. At the public hearing on the 16th, three citizens spoke. Two people supported the amendment, provided that concerns that they had with Tryon Manor Drive were addressed, and concerns they had about the future development of Track 5. Track 5, if you recall the map, that shows a little three-acre townhome portion in the current Dillinger PUD, all three speakers were concerned, well, what would that look like? If townhomes were built in that little three-acre piece near them, and these were residents in the townhomes on Tryon Villas, what would the views be like of the townhomes? What would be the impacts on streams? What would the townhome elevations be, and so forth? There were also some unrelated comments. All three people who spoke at that hearing had concerns about Tryon Manor Drive and how, and whether it would be extended. We tag those as unrelated because this planned amendment is not an amendment to the comprehensive plan. You don't have anything on the table before you to consider, any transportation. You don't have anything on the table before you to consider, any transportation amendment. So we're taking the comments and we'll use them, as we'll describe later, in another planning effort, but they're not on the table with this request. So we've covered some ground here, so I'd like to summarize some of staff's observations, and they're on this slide. First, to recap the case, this case is asking to change office and employment land to housing. We know there's been considerable concern regarding conversion of office land with rezoning cases and plan amendments by council on the community over the last several years. The Imagine Cary project is currently engaged in developing a new 25-year policy for employment and office site locations, economic development and housing. So caution may be advisable until we figure some of that out. So I've just brought up Imagine Cary, which is a new topic for many of the board members, so I want to talk about that a little bit. As you know, Imagine Cary is the town's ambitious effort to develop a new comprehensive plan to take Cary into the 21st century, out to the year 2040. The plan is being guided by a steering committee appointed by town council of about 32 members. The planning board had a member on the board, John Warner, and he cycled off the board, and he's a member of that committee. Julia Rudy, another former board member, is on the committee. So you've got some former members as representatives, and we had hoped as liaisons between the groups. And in sync with council's questions that they've had over the last couple of years about how are we doing on office land supply in Cary and our future of office employment and economic development, that is one of the topics that's currently being tackled with the plan update in Imagine Cary. So a lot of research has already been done on this topic. We have an economic development consultant on the project consulting team. We've had extensive interviews with the Chamber of Commerce, variety of business leaders, CEO roundtables and so forth. And employment site location was one of four topics we explored at two community meetings last July. We continued discussion with two more community meetings in November. So this slide shows some of what's been happening. In the office park, or the office market, in the last 40 years, the office market has been stratifying a bit. In the 60s through the 1980s, the suburban office park was king. That was the driver of most economic development and economic growth in Cary. Starting in the mid 90s, we started to get a lot of demand to add mixed uses into suburban office parks. And this was a change, office parks to be vital, needed to have more things in them, some shopping, some housing, services. The latest market shift in office space is a shift towards a demand for mixed-use activity center sites, places where your office is part of a mixed-use walkable compact area. So all three markets still exist, but 20 years ago, you never would have seen that third market and barely saw that second market on the slide. Research Triangle Park is perhaps the best exemplar of how this is going, taking a 1960s office park, and they themselves, with their new master plan they've just done, are reinventing the park because the market has gone to numbers two and three on this slide. So, given these changes in the office market, with Imagine Cary, we are now in the process of conducting land inventories, looking at all the remaining developable sites in the entire Cary planning area. And we're going to be coming up with a prioritized list for each of these fourth uses you see on the slide. Office employment, what are the best remaining sites, commercial and shopping uses, townhome, condo and apartment housing, and then single-family housing. So that's work that is going on this month and next month. We are, we will be working with the Economic Development Director at the Chamber, as well as our own ED consultant, when it comes to stratifying and prioritizing the office employment sites for Cary's future. So, even though we won't complete the inventory work until January, we're already, we have been finding over the last six months, some rather alarming findings that are kind of already bubbling to the surface that are making us open our eyes and say, this is really a critical issue for Cary. So here's a little preview slide. So this site is a preliminary draft of the sort of inventory product you may see available in January. In this case, the inventory slide you're looking at is particular to that number three office type, the office market that's looking for places in mixed-use walkable centers. So looking at those sites, on this map, you see the crossroads, South Hills and Swift Creek area. The colored parcels you see are the remaining developable sites. The A and B sites have actual potential to someday hold office development, and those are the ones colored in two shades of green. The E and F sites really don't have much development potential at all for office, and they're the ones colored in blue. So our A sites, the bright green, the most noticeable green, meet the highest criteria for successful marketability. And what you can see is there's really only three Type A sites remaining across all three of these activity centers, and the subject parcel is the largest of those three. So we zoomed out a little bit. How are we doing? Unfortunately, the situation didn't get much better when we zoomed out. This slide covers an area of almost 20 square miles, and it includes 12 activity centers on this slide. Across all 12 of those centers, covering 2,500 acres between them, we only found five prime Type A sites totaling 110 acres net or less. So this is the situation we've looked at, and the largest of those sites is dominated by the state property owner at Cary Town, across from Cary Town Center. So these are the findings that are kind of making us wake up with Imagine Cary and say, hmm, the future economic development of Cary, the economic engine, we've got some challenges ahead of us. So the next steps in Imagine Cary bear directly on this case because this is one of these high-profile cases where we're talking about office and getting, potentially changing away from an office use. The next steps are that town council will hold work sessions, they're scheduled for February 24 and March 3, about two months from now, to look at the policy direction, to consider the initial policy recommendations for where Cary should go for the next 25 years for employment locations, transportation, housing, shopping, dining, and then two geographic areas, southwest Cary and the downtown. So that's where we're at in Imagine Cary, and that'll come to bear on our recommendation in a minute. For CPA in particular, the land development ordinance has four criteria that need to be satisfied, one of these at least needs to be satisfied when you evaluate positively a plan amendment request. What's notable here in review cri, or evaluate negatively, these are the four criteria you've got to figure out how they bear on the request. In terms of new issues, we do have some new issues. The limited land supply that we're starting to discover we have for Cary is a new issue that was not as severe 15 years ago or 10 years ago when the Southeast plan was done. New issue also is that we have the land inventory work going on. It's not ready at this meeting, but it will be ready by the end of January. And lastly, in activity center metrics, all these guidelines about how much of each kind of development, office, housing, shopping, you want, those were all really stratified and created and approved by council about five years ago. So taking all that into consideration, we formed our final recommendation based on these considerations. First, we think that the crossroads center does have ample housing in it already. Crossroads Regional Activity Center is clearly low on office space. We've got mounting concern about our long-term supply of prime future office sites that are going for that third type of office market. And council is soon going to be looking at all this and providing initial direction at work sessions in a couple of months. So given that, staff has stratified recommendation here. We would recommend denial of the plan amendment, or alternately, tabling the case until, table it here at PNC until after council has confirmed the policy, the 30,000-foot policy direction for Cary at their February/March work sessions, or tabling it here at Planning Board and allowing yourselves to hold a work session to be updated on the land inventory work and the Imagine Cary process and where we're at. And that concludes this rather extensive presentation. I believe the applicant's representative is here as well, and I'll let you open the hearing.
Thank you. This one will open the public hearing, and hopefully we'll begin by hearing from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Ross Massey. I'm with Land Design. On our team, we also have Glenda Top here tonight assisting us with this effort. We're here to obviously to talk about the cop plan amendment. There's an associated rezoning case with this. The desire Scott has stated is that this would be a proposal to do a MDR land use associated with a townhome development. So what I've shown here for you, hopefully is not to be redundant, but is to kind of help clarify what is the story around the RAC, the Crossroads Activity Center. So the things that we do know is that Cary has set aside guidelines for the Crossroads Activity Center. These guidelines are based on different sizes of activity centers. Crossroads is the largest of those, being a regional activity center. And the thing that we do know about crossroads, based on the guidelines, is that the reality is it's within ranges for the commercial or retail for an RAC. It is within the ranges for office uses. The one range that does not exist within the recommended range for an RAC is residential uses. And the things that we know about activity centers is that it's important for them to thrive, is to have a mix of uses. And so we're here really to talk about how do we have the appropriate mix of uses? And so, looking at that, we've kind of built on the information that Scott has presented about, you know, where is the information, you know, where are the single-family uses? Where are the townhome uses? Where are the apartment uses? And we've expanded that to look at where are the office uses? And so what you'll see is there's already the existing Crossroads Corporate Park, which kind of dominates the office market within the RAC. Across that 40, you have the Center View Office Park. Clearly, what's happened here is Cary's starting to look at other ETJs, other jurisdictions with uses. But I would say, you know, let's focus on what is the appropriate mix within the RAC. So we're trying to provide a land use that's responsive to the market. And we know that the Dellinger PUD was approved back in 2000. In that 14-year period, there really has been no one that's come forward in that timeframe that could, you know, put the desired uses. And so the market really has not responded to that Dellinger PUD in that 14-year time period. Yet Cary has developed pretty aggressively in that time period, specifically in the Crossroads Activity Center. So then it kind of leads you, why, why hasn't this piece developed? Everything around it has developed, but when you look around this piece, predominantly what you see is apartments and townhomes that are transitioning to the single-family. And so our client, KAVNANIAN, desires to build a, an adjacent community that's consistent and provides a reasonable transition. And so looking at that, you know, we met with staff, we met with the neighbors, and we looked at, you know, what's the appropriate uses? And, you know, this use is in service to the activity center. It also provides a reasonable transition to the adjacent multifamily, townhomes and single-family. So this particular section or property on the edge of the activity center really is in an area that goes from commercial down to multifamily, and then continues very closely, if you've seen earlier tonight, to single-family. So intensity-wise, it does, it does provide a reasonable transition. So in addition to that, you know, staff has said that it's, to us on the transportation side, that it's very unlikely that the collector road that is to connect through this parcel would not, would not be a requirement of development. And so when we met with the neighbors, basically what they explained to us is that they did not have an issue with the land use. They had an issue with the collector road. They did not want to see, you know, the Tryon Manor Drive extend to Piney Plains. And, you know, through our discussions, you know, we've worked with the neighbors on the zoning to enhance the zoning side of the case to protect their properties. But from a land use perspective, our land use couldn't address the thoroughfare plan. And basically, we understand that this collector road has been on the thoroughfare plan for many, many years. So as such, that was really a request that we could not assist the neighbors with. So as such, we were trying to assist them to the extent practical, with improved buffering and things like that for the zoning case. So I would just ask that the board consider that we have a willing developer that is looking at a piece right now, that is willing to fit into the neighborhood and meet the guidelines and requirements for Towne Cary's design guidelines, and that, that this land use should be a reasonable transition. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and thank you.
Thank you. Now we're open to others that would like to talk to us about this case?
Good evening. My name is Warren Gintis, and I live at 148 Arabella Court. I am representing homeowners from Tryon Villas, including the Tryon Villa Homeowners Association Board. Tryon Villas is a community of 34 townhomes located immediately south of the zone property in question. We would, at this time, like to advise the Planning and Zoning Board that we support the Towne Cary staff recommendation to oppose rezoning of the Dellinger PPD property. We have multiple concerns regarding development of this property, primarily involving extending Tryon Manor Road and developing Track Five, which is currently a green space. Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to address us?
Good evening. Glenda Top with Glenda Stoppin Associates. Just a couple of points that I want to make. Ross did an excellent job going over our proposal, but just a couple of key points. As he pointed out, the road is something that we felt that we could not address. We met with staff, the road has been on the books on the comprehensive transportation plan for a very long time. It was on the plan when, when the residents that are concerned about it bought their homes. So that's just something that, that we put aside, and we were looking at land use. And again, I know this is not the zoning, but things that we could address, we did address with the rezoning. I just want to point out, I guess, one key point. As Mr. Ramage showed on a slide, and you can see here, the land use plan for this site is, is what was approved for the Dellinger PDD. Back then, it was a PUD, but the land uses reflect what the developer thought at the time was the most appropriate use. I was not involved personally on that rezoning. I don't know how much research they did to determine whether or not the land uses that they were proposing were appropriate. But be that as it may, the land uses, as you can see, was a track with, with mixed use, both commercial and office, commercial, and then the bottom piece for medium density. And actually, they put in a cap of 25 multifamily units on that lower piece. It's been a while since the PDD was approved, and there's been no activity. I think, as Mr. Massey pointed out, that does reflect, we think, the, the fact that the site is not that desirable for a non-residential use. The comment that was made about that MDR site being green space, I just want to point out that currently both, all three of these tracks have an approved land use designation and has an approved, which means it's approved for a use that someone could come in right now and develop the property. You know, this is separate and apart from, you know, what we're asking for in a land use plan, but, but as far as wanting that, you know, parcel five to be open space, it's got an approved land use right now. Someone could come in and propose 25 units there, and that road would get started, and it would begin to connect up to Piney Plains Road. So there are certain conditions that are on, in place right now that really go against what some of the property owners feel that they would like to see here. But, and I just thought that was important to point out because, you know, when you talk about, you know, making Track Five open space, it's got an approved zoning, it's got an approved land use. If someone wanted to, and they met the code, come in, submit a site plan, and it could be approved by staff. Again, just to summarize it, we understand that, that the town is looking at areas for appropriate office development. office development. We feel that if this site was appropriate, it would have developed, you know, a long time ago. In our meetings with the neighbors, although I hear what they said tonight, there was a sense, if you took the road away, that the use itself was an excellent transition from their townhomes to these townhomes. And also, with the rezoning, those 25 units that are currently approved on that site is greatly reduced. But again, in summary, we do feel that the proposed land use is appropriate, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address us in this case? Anyone? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this upper floor discussion. I'd like to ask a question to start with. Just a matter of procedure. You've suggested one option is that we table this case, but I believe there are some limits on how long we can put a case on the table.
Correct. I believe there's a 90-day limit.
Well, in 90 days, are we confident that we would have enough information from the Town Council work sessions in order to be in a better position to decide on this case than we are today?
And I believe it's the 90. I don't know, Ms...
I was looking that up while you were discussing this. There is also an option to ask council for an extension of the 90-day time period. So you can essentially get an automatic 90 days, but you can ask for an extension of the 90 days from council, which they could grant or not grant.
Thank you. Sorry for preempting you, but I wanted to understand whether that was an option or not.
Sure. I was going to ask about Track Five. The limitations on it, are they being removed with this rezoning request? I'm a little bit confused about why Track Five is even in this request. It's already MDR.
It's been referred to by applicants at the council hearing and tonight, but, let's see, can I get my little, here, this is, Track Five is this little tiny corner. It's about three acres of medium-density residential. So, and as Ms. Topps said, in the Dellinger PDD, it's already got zoning for 25 townhomes on that piece. At the council public hearing, the neighbors who live in the townhome community immediately south of that, Tryon Villas, said, "We would really like, if you're going to change anything, could you please make that part all open space, because we have some concerns about it?" But that's not part of the applicant's request, and that's either for the rezoning or for the Plan Amendment.
Right. But when the applicant comes in, and they include Track Five in the request, and Track Five is already MDR, and they're requesting to change to MDR, why is Track, I'm trying to figure out why Track Five isn't even an issue here.
It really isn't an issue, because it's MDR already, it would stay MDR. What's at issue here is whether the 12-and-a-half-acre office site and the 3.2-acre commercial site would also switch to MDR.
Okay. Just, so the 20, all right, I got it.
Carla, did we get you? Do you have the answer you need?
Well, it still doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, you know, they're not asking to change Track Five, is what I'm hearing.
Correct. Correct. The land use plan would rechange for Track Five.
I didn't know if that 25 limit was being removed, but apparently not.
I don't know. That would be...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking land use plan versus rezoning.
Exactly.
Right, gotcha.
Right. It's not part of the land use plan amendment.
Gotcha.
If you want to follow up, Ms. Bierman is here who's handling the rezoning side, but that'll...
No, no. I'm sorry.
Now, let's not get that part off the horse.
Yeah, no, that was my only question.
Warren, you got a question?
Two questions for you. You mentioned a public park planned, planned public park nearby, or an existing public park?
Planned. Let me see if I've got a zoom-out slide.
Where is that in relation to our...
Here, let me zoom out a little bit, and I will show you. Okay, so this is a zoom-out slide. If you'll notice, immediately south of the site, there's a very, you call it a lake or a very, very large pond next to the logic crossroads. As part of that, on that southeast corner of the lake, you see this open space. As part of, and I forget whether it was part of the logic crossroads or Tryon Village, the shopping center development, they made a donation, you know, under the parks ordinance of a park site. So it has not been developed, but it's, this property right here, if you can see the cursor on it, is reserved for, it's a small site, but it's meant to be a little trailhead, some features near the lake. It's not developed yet, however.
Okay, thank you. Second question. If you could go to the slide that showed the available commercial, the little green areas, didn't seem to include Weston or Regency?
No, except we're in a preliminary, you'll actually see a little bit of that. We're in the preliminary stages of doing this work, so we were rushing to try and get an example to show you of the sense of where the inventory is going. And we started with office. We did it, we've done a good section of the town. So we did this section of the town, and in a case you'll see shortly, we've done another section. The last part we're going to do is start moving up to North Cary. So, yeah, you still have the Weston Office Park, Sass Office Park.
So would be more, potentially more available of these type of properties, or...
Well, and the question is whether, this map is looking at sites that are good for the office market, that's going after the type of tenant who, usually who also has an employment base, that wants to be in a walkable mixed-use area. You know, good examples are, when Red Hat decided to move locations, they went to downtown Raleigh. All of their staff and executives said, "We want to be in a downtown walkable spot," and they rejected the park. You know, Citrix, I think it was, recently did the same, went to downtown Raleigh. So you're starting to see Epic Games is in crossroads, for example. So Epic Games, one of the largest computer Xbox game makers around, and my son owns a couple of the titles, they're in crossroads. And they have some hundreds of employees, and it's more of an in-town walkable area. There's an apartment complex across the street, they can walk to the movies, they can walk to, you know, two dozen restaurants in the crossroads area. So this map is trying to say, those kinds of firms that want to be in a walkable area where their employees can walk to shops, you take clients to dine, you've got, you know, lots of options in a close proximity, that's what this inventory is getting at. In January, as we move forward, we're going to do an inventory of, what about people who really want to be in an office park? And how many of those suburban office park sites do we have left? And then you kind of have the hybrid office market, where people want to be in a drivable suburban office market. They would still like to have amenities and housing reasonably close, but it's not a walking-distance situation.
Scott, will your study include available properties rather than just vacant properties? I'm assuming these green areas are all open land space.
The green areas, yes, are all open land that we know is currently in play. What we actually do is, and it gets a little complicated, because you, it's a little bit of subjectivity in deciding what's developable, and it's not necessarily just what's vacant. Some of what's vacant, what's a way to describe this? For example, out west, especially in Western Cary, a lot of the farmers in the area, they've sold the farm tracts. The last pieces they own are the pieces that have the house on it. So is a 10-acre site with still the historic, with the family house on it, is that vacant or developable or fully developed? So we carefully consider those kinds of things, kind of looking at the value per acre and the likelihood of a track turning over. So it is, there is kind of a call on that, which is something we could probably explain better in the work session, and we'll flesh out a little more in the report for this.
But my question is, is there space available today that has already been developed, but currently unoccupied, that would meet the criteria that you're talking about, walkability to amenities, that is vacant? And will any of that be included in your study?
Yeah, we will look at prime redevelopment areas. For example, a place like, one of the, when we had our community meetings, everybody, I mean, half the people who came to the community meetings in the summer talked about shopping and activity centers and employment. They all want to see some kind of redevelopment effort at Cary Town Center Mall, at Mayfair Plaza, at Reedy Creek Plaza. So some of the older centers that are struggling with occupancy or changeover, yes. So we will want to look at those, and we'll have to categorize them in a certain way to say these are going to be unique redevelopment cases, because that takes a whole different market, depending on the value of the improvements to land. But we will be looking at that.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
Couple of procedural questions to build off the chairman's question about the tabling. If, and I just say if, this goes, this is denied, how does that affect the applicant as opposed to it being tabled?
Okay. If the case is, if the board were to vote to deny the case tonight, then that recommendation would go to Town Council at the January meeting, one of the two, depending on the vote tonight. That would then unfreeze the rezoning case. And then the rezoning case would come before you for a public hearing following the normal schedule in February. And then would go, the rezoning would then go to council for a vote in March.
I guess my question is, should this be reapplied for? Is there the one-year layoff, like with rezoning? If this thing is denied, does this set the whole process back for an applicant for X amount of time as opposed to a tabling at 90 days? Or, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, in the, I believe in the LDO, we tie comprehensive plan amendment requests to follow all the same procedures as a rezoning does, in which case I would believe the interpretation would be subject to the same waiver on a one-year. However, we also have another thing going on, which is Imagine Cary and the Land Use Plan update. And sometime, you know, in the coming year, you'll see a new draft map and plan for the town of Cary. So hopefully, you know, sometime a year from now, the Southeast Area Plan won't even be there. It won't look the same as we move to a new master plan for the future of Cary. So rather than reapplying for CPA, maybe, you know, another option may be to get in line with comments from the owners and applicants of trying to participate in the crafting of the new plan and make sure the comments get addressed.
Can I ask a follow-up? And I'm trying to time this thing out. We tabled this thing for 90 days. Town Council does a work session, we probably are going to end up talking about it as well. But we won't have a new comprehensive plan gives us guidance until early sometime this summer?
Correct. But what we're, let me explain what's, going to go to Town Council, because right now, we've got those six big policy issues that we've been exploring as part of Phase Two of Imagine Cary. You know, where will we work? Where will we live? Where will we shop and dine? How will we get around? How will Southwest Cary grow? And how will the downtown thrive? So six topics. At the work sessions, council is going to be entertaining or considering the big-picture policy direction for the town. In the case, and we're going to be talking about this tomorrow night with the Committee for the Future. So the Committee for the Future, tomorrow night at their meeting, they're going to look at, I believe it's, three or four policy statements. One concerns, what should our policy be for suburban office parks? What should it be for mixed-use office parks? What should it be for this emerging market for mixed-use center office? And whatever else, you know, whatever remains. So there'd be a statement for each. So if, coming out of council work session, council said, you know, "I'm not, we're not concerned about providing office space in mixed-use centers for this kind of a Epic Games, you know, new corporation kind of model, that's not the Towne and Cary," then you'll have direction. That direction would tell you, oh, this land isn't as important to us as we thought it was. So that would be the kind of direction you would get, is council, how are, what are they going to say is the big-picture policy for office locations in these three kinds of sites? And hopefully, that would give you a little direction.
Assuming for a second, Scott, that they agree with the Imagine Cary folks and say, "Yeah, you know, we need to kind of reconsider this." I'm trying to think of the timing here. If we table this for 90 days, unless the council says, "No, Imagine Cary is probably out in left field," which I don't think they're going to do, at the end of 90 days, we're not going to have any better guidance than we have today.
Right. In that case, if they, if they confirm some of the things that we were talking about tonight, then you're back to where you're just picking the ball up 90 days later with no new information.
Exactly. That's my concern.
Yeah, and that's why we're not sure what the right answer is if the board...
I'm trying to figure out what the endpoint is here, and procedurally, are we better off doing a tabling and then asking for an extension for another 90 days? And that gets us six months down the road, but we still might not have a good sense of the new comprehensive plan...
Right.
...for this parcel.
And that's why, yeah, that's why one option of simply recommend denial would be, another way we thought of expressing it would be, when we've done area plans, and we were almost there, like adopting the Southeast Area Plan, and somebody's coming in with a rezoning case right before you're ready to adopt, you kind of know where it's going. Back in the day, we would also say, you know, "We're denying it because the time's not ripe." You know, this is an area in flux. We feel safer not entertaining a change right now because we have too much on the table. We don't know the final outcome. So that's another way to express a denial, is you deny because there's a lot of cards on the table right now. There's a lot of balls in the air. We're not sure which way it's going. Is the time ripe to make a big change in the face of policy direction that you will get late, shortly, but isn't there yet?
If we did a denial, and the council agreed with us, I think in January, then the applicant has to wait a year before they can reapply, right?
Well, they could continue the rezoning case. So if they, suppose council said, you know, we, suppose, I'm doing all supposes here. Suppose the board said, "We voted to recommend denial." It goes to council, council agreed with you, and they said, "Oh, we agree, we're not going to amend the land use plan, we're keeping it the same." The rezoning case still unfreezes, and it will still come to you for a public hearing in February. And you still have the flexibility, you can make, all the law says is you have to make a finding of whether the rezoning conforms to the plan or not, but it doesn't tie your hand behind your back. You're still free, if I understand correctly, to say, you know, "For this rezoning case, it doesn't conform to the plan, but it's got so many other good things for it, going for it, and so many extenuating circumstances, we're still going to recommend for the rezoning." And that's why...
Well, let's be real, if we're in the middle of a CPA revision, we're not going to do a rezoning that could be in direct conflict with everything Imagine Cary is doing.
Yeah, perhaps. I just wanted to clarify that that's the process. So denying the CPA does not stop the rezoning. The rezoning will still come to you unless it's withdrawn, it'll still come to you, and you will still act on it, and it will still go to council for final action.
I think the applicant has something she wants to add.
First thing I'd like to do, or we've been huddling up, back up there, we'd like to have the Assistant Town Attorney say for the record whether or not a CPA is affected by the one year.
By quick huddle with the Planning Director, I don't see that requirement in the LDO. I defer to the Planning Director, who is the interpreter of the LDO, but I don't see that same limitation for CPAs that we have for rezonings.
So there is not a one-year, I want to get this clear, because it's going to be in the notes, right? There, Jeff?
Correct.
Are you saying, yes, she's right?
Yes.
Mr. Alma said, yes, there is no one-year waiting requirement for a CPA denial.
So if we denied this CPA amendment, they could come back in 90 days and reapply?
They could reapply tomorrow, after the Town Council were to deny it.
Okay. But if we deny it, does that still fire off the rezoning?
So if you recommend denial of this case tonight, that will go to council in the January meeting. They will make a final vote, whether they wish to also vote denial or approve it. At any rate, the rezoning case will come to you in February for its consideration before the board, unless the applicant withdraws. And very often, that does happen, that the applicant says, "Look, if they're not amending the land use plan," you know, that they choose to withdraw. But that's totally at the discretion of the applicant. If the applicant doesn't withdraw, you will hear the case, and it will go to council. The rezoning case, and it will go to council.
So I'm going to ask the applicant, did you get your question answered? Did you get your question answered?
Yes. We got our question answered, because it was our understanding, and I appreciate the confirmation. We were not able to find anything about a CPA in the one year, just from past looking, but we wanted to hear that. It is our, we would like to have the Planning Board go to a vote tonight. It is... It is, and I say that for a couple of reasons. One, I appreciate the dialogue back and forth and just what's being implied during the conversation. The timing part is really somewhat unknown, and, and I think that's what I'm hearing some of y'all say. What, what, you know, when the work sessions might be, what's going to be decided, and all of that. At this point, particularly because there's not a one-year waiting period, we would like the planning and zoning board to make a vote, it will go to council, and then between now and council, there will be, I'm sure, discussions and we'll understand what's going on, but also, it's, it is within the purview, I think that's how you pronounce it, Mr. Ramich at the council, we could also ask the council to table it, you know, if, if they were not quite ready, and then it gets it sort of on, you know, some kind of understanding of a timeframe versus being out here forever and you all not knowing when you might get it back, or the questions that you ask, you know, is going to, you know, does it go with the work sessions, or does it go with the, the, the final plan? We just want it to get to a vote and then see what happens.
Not to game this thing too much, but we could table it for 90 days and then extend it for 90 days, and then the council could table it for 90 days and then send it back to us.
Right, we just...
We could achieve the same objective either way.
Correct.
Whatever you want.
And, and also, and, and someone here tonight can correct me if what I'm getting ready to say is wrong or incorrect. If we go to council, I think we could ask council to send it back to the planning board if they wanted to. So we could get it back to you anyway. We could ask council to come back, you know, if something's changed, we could ask the council to send it back here. I think from a timing standpoint, it's going, I'm not sure if the time, you know, what gets it out quicker, but I think based on what we've heard tonight, what we are asking the board is to take a vote.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have other questions?
Well, we haven't actually discussed the merits of the rezoning yet. I mean, the land use change, yeah.
That's my point, that's my point. Do we want to talk about the actual, well, it's actually not a rezoning, it's, just to be clear, this is a comprehensive plan amendment.
Comprehensive plan.
So do we have questions on the CPA?
I have comments, but not questions, so should we, you know, are we actually ready to take a vote, or?
No, we're ready to have comments.
I mean, it seems to me that the issue really boils down to, do we continue to force them to hold this land for office when nobody wants to build office on it? Right? I mean, is that the real issue here? Medium-density residential, I mean, I'm convinced that would be fine. You have the infrastructure here that we didn't see over on Stevens Road. They have shop, you know, they can walk to shopping. I mean, I can see where it would be an advantage for the people living there. You know, my concern is having a conversation about making land remain, you know, zoned for office when it's been sitting there for 13, 14 years and no one has wanted to build an office, and we're seeing that a lot. Maybe, you know, maybe the market is telling us something that maybe the urban planners haven't caught on to yet.
For the council.
Well, you could flip that argument too and say it hasn't been brought forward for a CPA change or a rezoning for residential, because that market hasn't been here either.
Well, there hadn't been much of a market of anything for the last few years, that's true, but it sounds like they have someone who is ready to go with, as a...
But aren't we, I mean...
And I don't know the answer to this, I'm just saying, how long do we hold...
For a plan amendment...
Hang on, Nancy, will you defer? I'm trying to keep us all in order here.
Isn't our, our job to look at what council and Imagine Cary wants to do going forward, and we don't know that yet, so there's too many unknowns in my mind to even address it.
But I think we could, they could consider this our input, right? If we go forward and we say, we've looked at this parcel of land and we think it's appropriate for, as it is, or MDR, I mean, that, we're, we're providing input to that. We've looked at it very carefully. So I don't think we necessarily have to take a backseat to Imagine Cary, because I think what we're going to see is exactly what staff has proposed. Staff is primarily in charge of that. They take input from all walks of life, and they put it together in some comprehensive output. So they've done the work here. You know, I think this is, I would be shocked if, if we didn't see this come back as an office parcel in Imagine Cary. So I, that's why I'm, I agree with, you know, Glenda, that we should go ahead and make a decision. And we're going to be addressing the same question with the same facts, whether we do it tonight or three months from now.
Buck?
Well, I don't have any issue with, with taking a vote on this tonight, one way or the other. I do see that, that really we're seeing at this point in time differing views. We've got one party, the town that says we need more office space adjacent to regional centers. We've got the developer side that says, I want to build townhomes in there, and then to cover all of that, we've got the Imagine Cary, the, the grand master plan for the town coming on board. So it would seem that a decision at this point in time very well could conflict with the, the long-term plans of, of the town, and we take an action that, that really doesn't fit with that. It's not necessarily in the best interest of, of all concerned at that point.
Other comments?
I'm good.
Well, I, I would look at this in, in two fronts, and first of all, thank you, it's been a fantastic presentation. I mean, it laid everything out that we could possibly have laid out. From a procedural standpoint, I'm not a big believer in kicking a can down the road, but I'm also not a big, I, I'm worried about momentum, and, and if, if we go ahead and just say we, we approve this amendment, how much influence does that have now as being semi-carved in stone going forward with the Imagine Cary work? And, and, you know, we just had a recent case here, and this, this was just change. Maybe we need to consider that more. And I, I kind of think that there's smarter people than me at this point, thinking about these larger issues, and I'd like to give them the, the most blank canvas possible. That said, I don't want to kick this down the road by simply tabling it, I don't think it's fair to anybody to do that. Now, on the merits of it itself, I mean, we were just told a little while ago that there's this dearth of, of townhomes around. We just put 99 townhomes in here an hour and a half ago.
Eighty.
There's 19 already, and then we put 80 more on top. So...
Well, you did, I didn't.
Well, but, and, and the other, the other issue there to me is with this, this office space, it's, it's been reviewed by our, by our staff, and they use the phrase, the market for the office. Of course, the applicant says there's no market for the office, there's only market for townhomes, but I, I would, at this point, tend to defer in, in the holistic picture and, and in the town's depiction, that the least harmful way of doing this would be, in my mind, to deny this today, which still leaves the, the door open for just about everything. Approving it today sends this snowball potentially rolling down a hill that, that leads to only one conclusion. And, and just in the name of leaving the, the canvas blank, I would be more inclined to, to go for a denial.
I'm going to disagree. I don't think we're sending a snowball down the hill there if we were to approve this. I, I'm in Carla's camp, maybe she oversimplified it, but I really don't think so. This, this property owner could have sold this as a commercial piece of property if somebody wanted it because it had close proximity to amenities, but it sat there for 14 years or for whatever length of time, and, and nobody's come forth and made that proposal, and several big organizations have moved into Cary or added to their existing presence in Cary, and they didn't apparently choose this site. So the applicant is asking us for a vote on this, and I think that's an important consideration, and I don't think that us voting on it is going to create any snowball. What it might do is create a little bit of a difference of opinion about whether or not we think that every parcel that is potentially a type A office site should be put in limbo. For how long? Who knows? Until these inventories get sold off to the satisfaction of somebody? Or can we address each one of these on the merits of what we're supposed to do, which is look at our zoning ordinances, look at our comprehensive plan, look at our LDO? If we had to just sit around and wait for what Imagine Cary is going to tell us, then we should have stopped doing some things five or six months ago and continue to stop doing things until we get some big ponderous piece of information that's going to say, all right, here's what we want to do. We don't know whether we're going to change anything, whether we're going to change a lot of things, whether we're going to change nothing, and everybody's just pretty much happy with the way Cary's going along. I think we ought to vote on this. I think this parcel is not going to be developed for commercial purposes. It hasn't been in 14 years, there's a low probability that it will, and I would support allowing the applicant to change this to medium-density residential.
Just to kind of respond to that, for me, and just looking at the merits of this case, I mean, it definitely seems like we are sort of hitting a moving target here with, with Imagine Cary, and, you know, things are kind of up in the air, but just looking at the merits of this case, and can you please go back to the slide you just had up a second ago?
No.
I think it was slide 88, maybe, the one with, yes. This is really what kind of stands out to me, and this is what I find concerning. I think what we're doing here is we're trading a lot of office space, and what we're getting out of it is townhomes. I mean, we have a lot of townhomes, as staff has stated in the presentation already, and, and for me, I really don't think that that's a very good trade-off. I don't think that trading a parcel this size that could potentially be developed, I mean, it's hard to say what's going to come in the future. I mean, it's obviously sat there for a long time, as, as been stated, but once it's developed, it's developed. It's obviously not going to be ever redeveloped as an office. So, so we're losing that, and all we're gaining is townhomes. And for me, I don't think that that's worth it.
Just to play devil's advocate though, Imagine Cary could very well rework these target numbers. We don't know that these targets are appropriate.
Well, that's...
They're targets that were, you know, they were targets years ago, that's what we're using. Do we have any evidence that they are the correct targets? So Imagine Cary may go in and decide that's, you know, things are different now. I don't know, you know? It's, it's a judgment call.
If I just respond to that, and, and targets aside, just the fact that we're losing, I think it's 180,000 square feet of office space. I mean, taking the targets out of the equation, that's a lot of office, given what is available there, and I, I still think that that's something very substantial that needs to be considered.
Other, other inputs here?
Can I advocate against the devil's advocate? Just if, if we keep this as office and it's not developed, and Imagine Cary changes their mind, or there's a rezoning that comes by, then it changes and they redevelop it and they go about their business. But as you said, once these things turn to townhomes, there ain't no going back at that point. And, and if Imagine Cary comes back and says, no, we really need 55%, then where are we? So just in terms of, of keeping your options open, office spaces is still the, the more flexible play.
Nancy, you had something?
Well, I agree, and I also am worried that if we make more townhomes, I don't know the exact number that would be there, but we're starting to keep bumping up, and I know this is not within our purview, but again, with the big picture, the amount of traffic and the amount of school capacity we have. So just put that out there.
I'm going to, I'm going to do a, a little bit of your job in traffic planning and tell you townhomes, homes would generate, I believe, less traffic than office would.
Okay.
And less than commercial.
And considerably less than commercial. I drive by this parcel virtually every day of my life, and so I've been wondering about it now for 22 years. And because I know the parcel very well, I, I've spent a lot of time thinking about what could go there, and I realize that after looking at it for so long, that little commercial wedge there, which would sit kind of in the back of the BJ Shopping Center, I didn't get that activity center, or that center, this, I guess it's Centrum, it doesn't have enough street visibility to be viable commercial, no one's going to build commercial there. So that part of the current plan, to me, makes no sense whatsoever. The second question I have is, just because we decide as some sort of high-level planning effort, it ought to be office, it doesn't mean the market is going to agree with us. And in fact, we've got, well, by my experience, 22 years of, of market reaction that they don't agree with us. Now, could that change in the future? You bet, but I take a look at the other places where we have office, and it's a, a larger contiguous area. I think we have 14 acres there that would be an office. That's a fairly small office complex. The other places I see office complexes that small that are kind of like standalone islands, I think they're all suffering to rent. They're suffering to get their space under lease, and so I expect that might be why we don't have any developers interested in, in biting this off. I, I hate putting this, holding this property hostage to a planning effort that we don't even know how long it will take, and we have no idea what we'll decide when it's done, other than the fact that we believe that there will be a bias toward office because we have a shortage there. I agree, we ought to go ahead and vote on it. I'm inclined to perhaps just say, let's, let's approve the applicant's request. We're going to get it back on a rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do, Carla.
I move that the board, board case number 14-CPA-05 to town council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Ladies first.
I think I've said all I could say.
Other comments?
Well, I, I'm supporting doing this for a lot of reasons, but probably the one key reason that is most important to me is that everything that I read in the business press and in demographic websites and things like that, I come to the conclusion that you've just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, and that is that office is still hurting. And, you know, I think the marketplace, while, while Mr. Greenspan said let the marketplace regulate itself in terms of financial services, I think that was a big mistake, but in terms of the marketplace regulating itself, in terms of what are the needs that a community serves, and what goes in, and what changes over time, because these are bingo numbers that were thrown out there, and we don't even know how scientific they were. They could be just grabbed out of the sky to some degree based upon the current thinking within the planning community. And the demographic here in Cary that was put before us during a work session that some of you have not had the advantage of perhaps seeing, was that Cary's a lot older town in terms of age than I think most of us thought. You kind of think of Cary as being a young, family-oriented community, but there are a lot of older people, and they're getting older, and they're like me, they really don't want to be dealing with a big home, their kids are gone, they're empty nesters. Townhomes or even single-family homes that, and we won't get to this until a few minutes later, but single-family homes that have a first-floor bedroom are getting more and more important to the buying public. Now, yeah, the real estate market has been probably, the housing market has probably been just as bad as commercial real estate. The housing market is rebounding a little bit, but it's rebounding at the higher end where money is available to build big homes, and that's what's getting built more frequently than middle-income homes. But I, I'm not, I don't think Cary is getting overbuilt in terms of townhomes, and... And to me, again, this property has had its chance at commercial for a long, long time. The marketplace says no, and the property owner says, at some point, and if I was the property owner, I'd be saying the same thing, it's time to move on with Plan B, because Plan A obviously isn't working, even though it looked good back in the time that this was put together. The other thing, the people that are upset about the road, again, I'm one of these people that basically believes if you see a stub, and you buy a home next to a stubbed road, don't come to the city and say, I don't want the road. You had a pretty good idea that it was going to be a road, that it was going to be extended, and to expect the city to come back and say, oh, just because you don't like it, we don't need to connect a road, and we're not going to do it. The applicant has pointed out that this could be developed today, the road would go in. If it was developed at whatever, that road would be there. So I don't think that should hold us back. So that's why I'm going to vote for this.
Other comments?
Nancy first. I go back to the staff recommending that we at least table this, because I think I would like to see if it's been how many years this has been on the market, what's another few months going to be? And also, it says the proposed amendment would result in a moderate decrease in the office space at build-out and a slight decrease in commercial space, while only slightly improving the housing mix. So I'm trying to figure out where we could do the least amount of harm. And it's kind of the answer after where can we do the most amount of good. And I appreciate people wanting a decision made right now, but I don't think now is the time to make the decision.
Okay, so just to be clear here, the motion on the table right now is for approval...
And I would say deny or hold, so I would not be against that.
Okay.
Did anyone want to say something?
Well, Mona, you had your hand up first.
Yeah. And I'm going to deny or vote against it. And the reason for it is, right now, it's medium-density office-commercial. This area of Cary doesn't have anything like some other areas in Cary that have the medium-density. They have townhomes, they have commercial, and they have office space. And so I think this area, while the last 10, 15 years hasn't been looked at that way, I think there is a potential, and I just don't think that we have enough, I have enough answers to support it at this time.
I too, Mr. Chair, will oppose the motion that's on the table for the various reasons that were previously discussed. And also, granted, this property's been setting vacant for a number of years, we also need to keep in mind that the entire commercial and residential market has been less than desirable over that same period of time, too. So potentially, something can come out of this later on. But I also feel that we have a lot of unknowns out there. Hopefully, we'll be getting some guidance from the Imagine Cary master plan as it comes forward. And then also, as previously noted, by denying this does not prohibit future development and the current developer or anyone else from coming forward at a later time with other activity.
So is it time to call a vote on this one? Because I have a feeling we're going to have to have a follow-on.
I feel like I have a unique position here, because I was actually a part of creating all of these plans the first time. So I know how. You just kind of put a stamp on something, because it's the best you can do at the time. And then you spend the rest of the time figuring out why some things should change because it didn't work. I mean, it's not, it's not saying that you didn't do a good job.
May I throw one thing out? Just one little thing. As he does very often, many times, Wayne's given me something to think about. And rather than talking about this in terms of kicking the can and everything else, let's live in the moment. There's a request in front of us on its own merits, and it asks one simple question that we're supposed to answer all the time. Not is office space a good use, but is townhomes, is MDR a good use? Because that's the proposal in front of me. Is that the most appropriate use of this land? And when I look at it on its face, as you've mentioned in the giant area, I can't say that it is. So I can't support this.
So I think it's time we vote on this one, because if the motion fails, we're going to have to vote on another one, and I'd love to get to that one.
Do we get to talk again?
Oh, yeah. But not quite as much. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is three, all those opposed?
No.
That motion fails three to five. So this is where somebody else now comes up, needs to come up with a different motion.
And I'm ready to do it. You want to do his table first, or you want to do my denial?
I want somebody to come up with a motion.
I move that the board forward Case Number 14 CPA 05 to Town Council with the recommendation that the amendment as submitted be denied.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
I think I've said all I need to say on that.
Ditto.
All right. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Hands here, one, two, three. All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries five to three. And I'm going to suggest that we've been sitting here now for three and a half hours, and maybe we could use a brief human factors break. What do you think?
Parker, we got to the last...
Need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion to recess? Now, we're going to go into recess for a minute. I think I'm supposed to hit the hammer, though, right? We're in recess.
Oh, man.
I'm going to call back the session, our December 15th Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and our next case is going to be 14 CPA 06, the Orem property presented to Mr. Remmich.
And thank you very much. This will be a little bit like deja vu. This is also a request to amend the comprehensive plan, this time for about 26 acres on High House Road. And if I said the prior case was the most thoroughly evaluated and longest CPA report you've probably seen in a while, this is the second most. So please bear with us, and we'll try and move through quickly. This site is located on the north side of High House Road, immediately east of the Bradford mixed-use development, which is currently under construction. East of the site is the Preston planned unit development, and north of the site is the Georgetown subdivision. And to the south, on the opposite side of High House Road, is the Seerstone community currently under development. This is an aerial view looking northward, taken, I think this is 2013 photography, so you can see at that time the Bradford beginning to take shape on the left, and the site on the right-hand side. Mail notification was sent to all the properties within 800 feet of the site, shown in yellow on this map. According to Cary's GIS maps, there is a stream and flood plain that forms the northern property boundary of the site, buffering the site from the Georgetown subdivision. According to Cary Parks and Greenway's master plan, there is a multi-use street-side trail planned along High House Road. It's not all in place yet, but it's developing over time. Street-side trail typically is a 10-foot paved sidewalk, wide enough for bicyclists and joggers, other users. This site is about a mile from Bon Park and one and a half miles from the Davis Drive parks and the Cary Tennis Center. According to the comprehensive transportation plan, both High House Road and Davis Drive are designated as major thoroughfares with four travel lanes on each of them. Nearby Bridle Creek Drive is designated as a collector road. At present, C-Trans fixed route service is provided along High House Road in front of the site via Route Number Four. The long-range service expansion plans for C-Trans also envision future service along Davis Drive, about a quarter mile west of the site. This site has R40 base zoning, and it's also part of the Cornerstone mixed-use overlay district. This slide is zoomed out a little to show you the context for the site and for the Cornerstone Community Activity Center. From left to right, you can see Highway 55 going north to south, with the West Park Neighborhood Activity Center there. Moving one mile to the east, you hit the Cornerstone Community-sized Activity Center. One mile further east of that, and you come to the Preston Corners Community Activity Center. So this gives you a little bit of the lay of the land in the area. And the subject site has the star on it in the middle of the slide. Future land use recommendations for the site are given by Cary's Townwide Land Use Plan, which identifies the site as being part of the Cornerstone Mixed-Use Community Activity Center, and the Activity Center boundary is shown with the big, bold, blue line on this slide. The future land use recommendations in this case are provided by Chapter Six of the Townwide Land Use Plan. This reflects policies that were fully revised and updated by Town Council five years ago. In a nutshell, the current policy recommendation is what you see in the inset box here, that future development of the site should improve the overall mix of Activity Center, commercial office, and residential uses. So unlike the prior case where you had an area plan that really laid out all of the uses within the Crossroads Center, this is not an area plan. So the rule of thumb is simply that, as the mixed-use center evolves, the goal of each successive development is to improve the mix, and to improve the mix using the guidelines adopted by Town Council in 2009, which are those metrics that you saw earlier. The applicant is requesting that Cary's land use plan be amended so that the site is removed from the Cornerstone Activity Center, and then re-designated as low-density residential. The LDR category indicates single-family detached housing at densities of 1 to 3 units per acre, or lot sizes of about 12,000 to 40,000 square feet. So on this slide, the subject site is virtually the only remaining developable site in the Cornerstone Community Activity Center, 26 of the 28 acres. There's a small 2-acre site on the extreme left of the site, which actually has quite a nice home on it, so it's very unlikely to redevelop, but it doesn't quite fit in at this point. The land use plan provides recommended amounts of commercial and office space and housing for Activity Centers. These metrics were the result of a two-year effort of council work sessions in 2008 and 2009, reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board, and adopted by Town Council. So this slide compares those recommendations against the projected build-out of this Activity Center, exclusive of the subject parcel. So this is what would happen if you, right now, we don't think about what could go in that parcel. The recommended amounts are in the gray column, and the build-out projections are in that yellow column. So if you look at the first row, which is recommended commercial square footage in a community activity center, we're right about in the middle of the recommended range. If you look at the bottom row, dwellings per 1,000 square feet of non-residential space, we're smack dab in the middle of the recommended ratio. So a little bit like the prior case, the most significant finding concerns the proportional amount of office space in this Activity Center. At a minimum, the Cary standards call for at least 30% of total floor space to be office, really, and also, we expressed that ideally, there should be a minimum of at least 40%. So excluding this parcel, the projected build-out will be about 38%. So we're slightly under the ideal minimum. At the October 30th council hearing, two citizens spoke in support of the amendment, citing traffic concerns. Since traffic concerns in this area have been brought up quite a bit in recent years, I'll provide a brief update right now regarding the situation out there. So the first observation is that, obviously, High House and Davis Drive are both very heavily traveled boulevards, albeit sometimes they have relatively compressed rush hour periods. Both High House and Davis Drive, in its location, have been widened to their full planned width, so they're both two lanes, travel lanes in each direction for four lanes. They have wide outside lanes for bicyclists, and dual sidewalks along both roads are either at or near completion. Both roads, therefore, meet Cary's multimodal standards. And we have C-Trans, as we mentioned, currently serving High House, and in the future, anticipated to serve Davis Drive. So this is the situation in this Activity Center. What's difficult to perceive on the ground right now at this point is that there is a planned strategy for traffic management, but it's not yet complete. The four quadrants of the intersection are planned to be served by a ring road. It's the blue dashed line, you see, if the pointer will work here, it's this blue dashed line that proceeds around and circles the entire intersection. They're also supplemented by some additional connecting roads, which are these lighter magenta dashed lines. I keep losing the, here we go, magenta dashed line, here's one of them. So we have supplemented by that. There are, on the ring road, four signalized intersections are planned, plus Davis Drive. So the plan is that these, we have quite a network to distribute trip movements within the Activity Center. The goal of the ring road design is to disperse the trips and shift turning movements away from the Davis and High House intersection, and toward these other four signalized intersections. Traffic model projections indicate that there will be vastly improved traffic movement once this is all complete. It is not complete right now. It's about 50% complete. So the northeast and southeast quadrants of the ring aren't there yet. So we just want to point that out. Observations, we've covered some ground here, so I'd like to summarize some of the findings so far. The first finding is that the Activity Center's road network is not yet complete, so we feel there may need some time for construction to complete, and the traffic patterns to settle out, but the long-range modeling of the solution was that would be positive. Again, Imagine Cary is currently engaged in developing new long-range transportation policies, informed by forthcoming traffic modeling. In this, the first quarter and second quarter coming up, we're going to do a couple rounds of traffic modeling for Imagine Cary, and test some scenarios for the future. So traffic-based decision-making at this point is a little bit difficult to do, because it hasn't settled out, it's not complete, and we're moving into a new transportation modeling phase in the next year, in this coming quarter. Other observations, as again, like the other case, this case seeks to change office and employment land to housing. There's been considerable concern regarding the conversion of office land that we've heard from Town Council at up to half a dozen recent rezoning and CPA cases. The Imagine Cary project, as in the prior case, we're currently looking at that future employment and office policy. So that same situation, we feel applies on looking at this case. And this is the same slide as we saw a little while ago for Dellinger, just pointing out that, again, we're thinking about the changing market for office, and does it have an implication in this case? You also saw this slide with the Dellinger case, that the land supply inventory is something we're currently starting and working on, that we'll be breaking out different types of office uses, prioritizing them, and looking at other uses as well. And just as for the Dellinger case, you know, the same finding applies, as we moved into this part of town, there is a limited remaining supply of prime future office land across all three office market types, and for the walkable mixed-use office market, so that type that wants to be within walking distance to amenities in a more compact area, that future land supply is even more restricted. Cornerstone, and particularly of concern, I think, is that Cornerstone is likely one of a very limited number of Activity Centers that can provide a prime site, and the subject property is the last of those sites in Cornerstone. So this slide shows a preliminary draft of the sort of inventory you may see in January, so we've moved out now into the center of Cary. This inventory, again, we're looking at the inventory for sites that are going after that walkable office market, so more of the millennial, high-tech, creative class type of employee and firm that wants to locate in this kind of a place. The colored parcels, again, are shown in shades of green and blue. The Type A and Type B, or A and B sites, the best ones, are in green, and the sites that are very unlikely to develop as this kind of office space are shown in the two shades of blue. So A sites meet the highest criteria for successful marketability, and in our initial findings, there's only one Type A site remaining across the seven Activity Centers and 14 and a half square miles you see on this slide. So this is one of the findings that's kind of leaping up to us as we look at this site, this part of town, the center of Cary, and its seven centers. So as for the prior case, the next step in Imagine Cary bears, again, directly on this situation, that Council has upcoming work sessions, that we're in the midst of doing inventories, that in January, we'll be meeting with the Chamber and our Economic Development consultants to really drill down into this whole situation further, and then to get policy direction from Council. And as for the prior case, we have the same considerations as far as the LDO's criteria in evaluating a plan amendment, that the new issue, we feel, is satisfied that the limited land supply for future office employment is becoming problematic for Cary, and that we have these upcoming decision points in the very, very near future. So, in summary, taking all of the analysis into consideration, once more, we formed our recommendation based on these four observations. First, that in Cornerstone, we feel we already have ample housing. The numbers are very good. We have tons of single-family in the area. We've got two apartment complexes, a retirement community, patio homes, town homes. We have very good housing diversity. But Cornerstone is low on office space. We have mounting concern about the long-term supply of prime future office land, especially for this particular office market, and that Council will soon be looking at this issue, as we said in the prior case. So we have the exact same recommendation we had for Dellinger, that we feel the case is not ripe, that there's too many things we don't know. The staff recommendation is to recommend denial at this point. Alternatively, again, we put on the table the option that, if you would like more information, the Planning Board may wish to hold their own work session, and we'll provide a briefing with the latest and greatest information in January, or you may have the option of tabling it for Council to flesh out some of those recommendations before you take action. So that concludes the presentation. Again, the applicant's representative is here, as you open this hearing.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to open the public hearing, and we will begin with the applicant's presentation.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Glenda Top, and I'm here representing the owners of the property, the Orem's. And I'm probably going to read more from this one than I have in the last couple of ones. I find what I'm going to say very important, and I don't want to get off track. The property is currently designated on Cary's land use plan as part of the Mixed-Use Community Activity Center, with an underlying base land use designation of low-density residential. The proposal is to amend the land use plan by removing the two properties from Cornerstone. The proposed land use designation is low-density. Activity Centers consist of commercial, institutional, and office uses needed to support a specific geographic area, and these centers also include high and medium-density residential. After the adoption of Activity Centers, provisions were added to allow detached dwellings, provided there are minimum densities, and this was with the direction of Council wanting to see detached residential and Activity Centers. Community Activity Centers has a density minimum of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for the rezoning is below that. Staff and us tried to work together, but it was not possible to reach that density, thus the reason to remove it from the Activity Center. In both the Council and Planning and Zoning Board staff report, staff outlined desirable land uses for this property that included town homes, combination of town homes, and other multifamily with office, and just office uses. Since the approval of the Community Activity Center, this area has seen a concentration of medium and high-density residential development. Properties, owners in the area, in our neighborhood meetings, voice a concern with the continuation of the high and medium density, and voice a concern with the impact. Staff pointed out in their staff report, the amount of office square footage in the Cornerstone Activity Center is at the low end of the range allowed in Activity Centers, and they projected that as much as 340,000 square feet of office could be on these properties. This use would also have an impact on the area, affecting the traffic, and the concerns voiced by the residents. Just want to point out, although this is not the rezoning, this is in comparison to the maximum of 67 single-family homes that are being proposed with the accompanying rezoning. At the Town Council meeting, as was pointed out with staff, two citizens spoke in favor of the proposed land use plan. Several councils members spoke in support of the reduction in the density, and also pointed out that speakers at the public hearing were in support of the CPA. We understand that the town has standards for Activity Centers. We believe that as Activity Centers get built out, the development that occurs within and around Activity Centers, along with existing land use patterns in the area, affects their boundaries. Conditions change. We believe this is the case with the Orem property. The Orem parcels are at the edge of the Activity Center, adjacent to low-density residential development, across the street of Seerstone, which is a retirement community. By removing the Activity Center designation, these two parcels can develop using the existing underlying base land use designation, and develop what they use that is compatible with the adjacent properties to the north and east, with minimal impact on the surrounding area. Based on the location of the Orem property and its relationship to other developments, we believe that the best use of the property is low-density residential. The Orem's want the property designated for low-density residential. During the Bradford rezoning, there were discussions about moving these parcels from that Activity Center. Nothing occurred at the time. With this case, the opportunity is here to remove it. We feel that the proposed comprehensive plan amendment does reflect Council's desire to see this type of use at this location. The residents surrounding the proposed CPA support the request. They see that the low-density designation would have the least amount of impact on their area. It is compatible with the surrounding development. As was pointed out, their two big issues was not only traffic, but stormwater, and with the low-density, they feel that there's minimal impact. And we just want to add that there was a lot of concern about the potential of Bridle Creek Drive connecting to, I don't know if it shows here, but connecting to this development. And there is a concern that if there is more intense development on this site, that actually might be something that the town would like to see. I want to add one point. One of the elements of Activity Centers is connectivity in a walkable community. With this plan, there will be a road connection to the Bradford, the Publix area, so this residential area will have the ability to have driving access. There will also be sidewalks out here throughout the development that will allow people to also get to the commercial and non-residential development. So the residential will still have elements of an Activity Center. In conclusion, to amend the comprehensive plan, we feel addresses the concerns of the surrounding property owners who want to see low-density residential dwellings versus more town homes, apartments, and office development. It also addresses Council's wishes to see detached residential in these types of locations. We understand that staff may prefer to see the Orem property remain in the mixed-use activity district with a different land use, but it is our opinion that the site is best suited for low-density residential development. This concludes my presentation. We ask for your support, and I can answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm going to open up the public hearing for citizen
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm John Shaw, and I'm here representing citizens for Cary's Future Incorporated, and in particular, representing myself as a neighbor of this project, not an immediate neighbor, but not too far away. I support the comprehensive plan amendment that removes the Orem tract from the Cornerstone Activity Center. We have heard from the staff about the potential office development that could go here if it's not removed from the Activity Center. I just want to say that that will not happen. The opposition of the neighborhood is so great to any expansion of the Activity Center, that I don't think there would be any chance that it would happen, and it should be dismissed completely. I believe that the Activity Center is large enough. In fact, it is too large. One of the concerns that I have, which I'll address, is traffic. As a resident of a neighborhood not far from the site, I drive through the Davis Drive-High House Road intersection very frequently, almost every day. And as I described to you in an email yesterday, that intersection is already failing, and it will get worse. Expanding the Activity Center to build offices or retail Center to build offices or retail will only make it worse by adding more traffic. Now, there was some mention in the staff report or in the staff presentation about roads going, being added around the Activity Center to divert some of the traffic. Now, most of that, other than the southeast quadrant, most of that has been built. The northwest quadrant was built and finished several years ago. The northeast is operating now and has been opened. They have had absolutely no effect, that I can tell, on the traffic at that intersection. It's true that office traffic is in the opposite direction from the residential traffic in many cases. But in the case of this intersection, congestion occurs in every direction all day long. So that really would have no effect. Now, the staff report stated that there are many things in the other parts of the Activity Center in Stone Creek Village and the Cornerstone Shopping Center that are within walking distance. Judging purely by distance, many people, not everyone, but many people can walk this distance, and would be able to walk from offices to the various restaurants and stuff in the other parts of the other quadrants. However, to do so, they would have to cross Davis Drive. That is very difficult. I would challenge anybody to cross that street at the intersection on a regular basis. I urge you to recommend to the council that they approve the CPA to remove the Orem property from the Cornerstone CAC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. It's good to see you again.
And nice to see you. Nice to meet the new people here.
Good evening. I'm Bob Anderson with Pulte Group, and we have this property under contract with the Orem family. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points and just give you guys a little bit more of the history with the meetings that we've had. We had probably 50 people in attendance to our meeting. Most of them went from Preston. Our plan for this project was to do an age-targeted 60-lot development with a master-down, single-family. And out of those 50 people, there was only one couple that had kids. So our demographic was sitting there, listening to us as we were talking to them about this project. And they were adamant about two things. One was a use that would increase the traffic coming along that intersection, and two was having a use that would need to connect to Bridle Creek. Now, with single-family residential, we're able to do this. We don't need a TIA. We're low-traffic count. We have a connection with Northwood Raven that we have worked out with them on a verbal basis. But an office use that would kick in a TIA would more than likely need more than one outlet, because you just have right-in, right-outs on High House Road to kick into Bridle Creek, which is going to open up a hornet's nest with this group. I mean, we have spent lots of time with them, and as you can see from this and from the public hearing we have with council, there's nobody here opposing this use. Northwood Raven, who has a huge investment at that corner, if you, they would want office there to help their investment, they would have been opposing this. They are in support of this use. So there's a lot of support for this right now. Also, the seller, who's very savvy, very smart guy, he hired a professional brokerage group from the area who know office and residential probably better than anybody in this area. And if they could have gotten him a price for highest and best use with an office user, they would have brought him that. They couldn't find anybody. You know, our use, even coming in at single-family, was what they found to be the highest, best use. They put it out for bid. This wasn't something where I just went and contacted the property owner to get it under contract. So from a professional standpoint, from a group that does offices, they could not find somebody to put this property under contract, even at the economy where it is now on the uptick. So I just respectfully ask that you guys do not table this, please. I just respectfully ask that you guys vote on this tonight, so that, you know, yea or nay that this can move forward to council, and I'll let them make the decision. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak with us?
Good evening. My name's Hillman Duncan, and I actually worked with the Orem's and have worked with the Orem's, I'll give you a card, for 10-plus years, actually was involved with the Bradford project years ago. And in talking and working with Jack, he, we did talk about office development. We talked about residential development. And if you look at the office, if you look at the office market, it's really, it's really a market where tenants want to go to a high-dense area, but it's a mixed-use area like a North Hills or a downtown Raleigh or downtown Durham, where it's truly a dense office development, meaning half a million to a million to a million and a half to 2 million square feet. This site does not really lend itself to that type of office development. And so in choosing Pulte, Mr. Orem did not choose, he did not choose the highest offer, the highest bid for this project. He chose a group that he knew would deliver a product that the citizens in the neighborhood wanted, and so that's how that came to fruition. So again, and I've been in the office market for 20 years in this, in the triangle. So I just really do not see where office product would do well here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to us? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case for board questions.
I have a question.
Please.
So this rezoning is for a third of the entire site. Is that correct? But we're thinking about rezoning the entire area.
It's a plan amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. So because of one-third of the area, we're thinking about replanning that entire site. So we don't know what's going to happen with the other, that will have to be all residential, is what we're saying.
Let me pull back, and maybe this will help. Let me go back to an earlier Activity Center side.
And if we...
Okay, if this is... So here's the entire mixed-use activity center. It can, takes all four quadrants of the intersection of Davis and High House.
Right.
The northwest one and the southwest quadrants are pretty much fully built.
Right. So we're saying this site, this question is here to move that to L.
To take that out of the Activity Center. So on the southeast quadrant, you've got the Seerstone project currently under development. On the northwest, half of it is under development as the Bradford.
Okay.
And then the other half of that quadrant is this vacant site.
So we're saying it should be, the proposal here is to say it should be low-density residential.
Right. Instead of part of the Activity Center, which would mean
Okay.
you would try and provide more of what you have the least of.
Okay. So and if this is denied, that one area, the Orem property, still could come back as a specific case annex to be a, be low residential, right?
If the plan amendment was denied.
Right.
So just like the Dillinger case, your recommendation would go to council at a January meeting. Council would decide how they wish to vote on this plan amendment, and then that would unfreeze the rezoning case again, which would come to you in February.
And then they could get that approved. The reason I'm concerned here is I think a lot of people in Seerstone and Bradford bought, maybe not with the idea that there was going to be a huge office, you know, game place there, but there might be doctor's office or preschool or some other uses. And here, we've just totally eliminated that from happening based on one property in that site. So I guess that's where I'm heading on, my thinking on that one. So we're not, maybe he's not saying no to this next rezoning or future down the road, but we're saying maybe not change the whole thing.
I guess the staff question in the report is, it's the last site you've got in about a 15-square-mile area in central Cary, that the bones for a very, very good mixed-use center are there. So when it's done, the Bradford's going to build very much in the same style as North Hills, but Bradford's only about 30, 35 acres. With this site, you've then got about 60 acres, which is almost the same size as North Hills.
And I do appreciate the traffic there is horrendous. But I just don't know if we'd be not taking into the input the new residents there and what they were kind of sold to think what might go next door to them.
Scott, under the existing Activity Center plan, is this site designated as residential today, but it would have to be at a higher density?
No.
Than the LDO report.
It actually, as of 2009, the site has no recommendation on it at all, other than being part of the Activity Center. And the only guideline for this property is that, since it would be developed as part of a mixed-use Activity Center, the rule of thumb in the doc, in the plan, is provide more of what you have the least of in the center, according to the metrics. In this case, the staffs, when we looked at the numbers, you've got plenty of retail, you've got plenty of housing. What you don't have much of is office. So if you had, if this was a rezoning case, suppose someone came to the board today with a mixed-use sketch plan, and they had mixed-use rezoning, because suppose somebody wanted to develop that as part of the mixed-use center, what you'd be hearing today is a request for mixed-use rezoning with a mixed-use, with a preliminary development plan, excuse me. And the way you would test whether that conforms to the land use plan, you would look at that PDP and say, hmm, are they giving us more of what we have the least of, more of what we're most lacking? How is it, is it shaking out in those terms? So you'd actually have quite a bit of, you'd have a little bit of freedom in there to take a look and say, well, you know, office could be a good fit on the site. We think that's what's most lacking. That does not mean in a future case, you couldn't do a mix of office and housing or something else, if you saw the, you know, you had a good compromise that was moving something forward in that area.
You know, while this could support office, I mean, there's a lot of office on High House. And, you know, a good example is Cary Parkway at High House, and we know what a disaster that intersection is. I mean, you know, the traffic is a huge issue to me here.
I know.
And if you put office here, you will be bringing people in to this site who are not already here.
Well, I think people, I'm sorry, can I, can I be devil's advocate?
We're just having a discussion. Is that okay?
Well, I'd tell you, we're going to keep a little bit of process. Here you go.
So I guess my point is, though, I think that it is with the idea of walkability, that the new residents there were thinking they might be able to walk to a dentist office or a doctor office or have a preschool in the area. So I, I'm given the idea of, given that there is no other option, and then once we turn that residential, we've just taken away that option. We've taken it off the table. It's kind of a big, huge jump for me and I've...
That just sounds to me like, from what Scott said, if they were told that, they were told something that was incorrect, where that they had no right to be told. There was no plan for that.
Rather than getting into a debate here, let's see if anybody else has something to say.
I have a few questions about the circular road. Would you mind bringing that slide back up again? Ring road. I better use the right terms.
And I may need to ask Mr. Jensen to help a little bit on this. He's been looking at this for a long time.
My questions, my questions about the dash line going through the site, if that goes to low-density residential, I assume that road no longer exists.
Well, there would be a requirement, there is a stub right now coming out of the Bradford at the northern end of the Bradford property, so it does stub to the site. So under town policy, they would have to have a road connect to that stub, and they would undoubtedly need an access point onto High House Road. And I would presume we would ask that to line up with the access coming across from Seerstone.
Yeah, I'm just...
If I got that wrong, let me know.
It's divided median.
Yeah. Oh, it's a divided median, median divided there? Okay.
Wow. Because it strikes me that so many other times, we hear people talk about, I don't want a road going through my neighborhood where I live and my kids play, where people are going to be short-cutting from one corner to another. Yet, that's the intent of this road, is to allow people to bypass that intersection. I just find that a little bit incongruous. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
When this property was expanded, this used to be a neighborhood Activity Center, and it was changed to a community Activity Center, which at the time I didn't support because Davis was only two-laned, and High House, gosh, I can't remember if it was four-laned at the time, I think it was. But, you know, you can imagine how bad it was. It was, but it was expanded. I'm just curious, were the Orem's, did they request to be in this Activity Center, or was that just taken in because there was some, you know, buildable land there? Do you remember? It's not a question.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a do you remember?
It is a, yes, they were brought into the Activity Center in 2003 when the LDO was adopted, and they went and, I believe that was the time when they went to the Activity Center. Mr. Ulmer may know. When the northwest quadrant with Stone Creek Village was approved, I believe that was the trigger where, at that time, a CPA was done to change it from a neighborhood to a community-sized center. Because back in pre, I forget when this was, early 2000s, late 90s, when Stone Creek came in, there was a rule that when you're a neighborhood size, you should never have more than one shopping center. And this was clearly a second grocery retail. So that was the trigger. Since then, as of 2009, those limits don't apply on Activity, on neighborhood Activity Centers anymore.
Do you remember if the Orem's requested to be a part of that, or were they just brought in?
Yeah, I don't know how the process worked. When the town did the town-wide rezoning to implement the land development ordinance in 2003, we proactively rezoned almost three dozen Activity Centers. There was a whole series of community meetings from one end of Cary to the other. Everybody was notified and had a chance to speak at that time. So all that was considered, and we'd have to go to the records of the public meetings. But I believe it's, they've been since that point in time. We can double-check and send the board an email, if you wish, to give, take a little more research into it.
I have a question. I have a question. Who owns the other two-thirds of that site? Do we know?
Of the yellow site, the site in question?
The star is, yeah.
Oops. Hit the wrong number.
No.
Okay. Of the Orem site here, the Orem site consists of two parcels. So there's two parcels. There's one parcel here and one that surrounds it. So it's this site...
Oh, so that whole thing is the Orem's.
Right. So the Orem property are these two...
Oh, I wondered that little piece in there is the four-acre. Got it. Check. Okay.
Yeah, no, it's the entire parcel.
I thought there was other pieces in there that, okay.
Yeah, no, it's the, it's this entire, the 26 acres is this entire thing right here.
Got it. Okay. I'm sorry. I was confused. I totally, okay, I'm good then.
That's okay.
So...
You can get confusing.
Other questions? I think maybe we've covered some of this ground in the previous discussion.
I guess for me, this is a little bit, you know, more, I guess, more exaggerated case for me, simply because I know Jack and Kathy Orem. It's a single family living here. And when I knew them 25, 30 years ago, they were in the middle of the country. And then this horrendous development has just encased them. And so they're sitting here in the middle of all of this, looking to get out. And this makes it even worse to me if we were to say, no, you have to wait for someone to come along and build an office here, because this is a single family paying taxes on what is probably a very high-cost property, you know? And I mean, so, you know, there's, there's some point, we talk about what the town needs, we talk about what the developers need, we talk about what the neighbors need, but we always tend to overlook the guy sitting there who's paying the taxes on the land. So I just like to bring up that perspective, you know?
Can I, I totally, due to 180 myself, when I realized that was just not that little piece, it was the whole site, because there's nothing more than those neighbors would like, I know for a fact, and the traffic, to have that little residential. Sorry, I thought we were piecemealing it again. Sorry.
This, this request kind of takes me back to 2008. I started on this board in 2008. This was shortly after a fairly contentious debate around the Davis and High House area. And I remember the adamancy, the militancy of the neighbors there. And I remember the adamancy, the militancy of the neighbors there, against some of the things that ended up happening. I can only imagine, today, if we recommended that we hold this up for office, what some of those same neighbors would do. It's pretty clear, from what I've heard, that, that Preston neighbors would like this to be residential, would not like it to be office. If we try to stuff office down their throat, I think we're gonna have DeJiva all over On the other hand, I appreciate that we're going through a planning effort that's looking at a critical deficiency. And anything we do to make it worse, makes it worse.
You know, this area, though, is very close to Southwest Cary, which is totally undeveloped. So by denying office at this one spot, you simply have to go a couple miles down the road, and you've got open space all the way to Jordan Lake.
But I would suggest to you, having survived the Chatham County Cary joint land use plan.
Okay, you have open space all the way to the Chatham County line.
That, that we don't have the flexibility we might have hoped for at the beginning of that process.
And you also have 540 interchange. Right? So here, you know, we talk about these being major boulevards, but they're not, really. They're four-lan, you know, they're, four-lane roads are already heavily congested.
And we will cover the office inventory. There is probably, the, all of the southwest is low-density, single-family residential, so we've got many, many thousands of acres for that. All the Chatham plan is pretty much a single-family, very low-density residential. We have 9,000 acres or something for that. The interchange site is probably as of good potential as a suburban office park, but because of the lack of connectivity and support, I think we would score it very low for the mixed-use office market.
Any other questions?
Thank you for reminding me of the lightning-rottness of this, this area. I had, I had forgotten about that.
What was the name of the group?
Davis and High House.
Davis and High House.
I'm about to hold a golf club up in the air. One of the things about, if we were to not approve this, the status quo does not necessarily default to office, as it may have in the other case, because this is still wide open. There's no preferred use for this thing. The, the one thing that just keeps coming back to me on this is, this is one of the few intersections that we weren't chasing events. We planned this, designed it, the roadways and everything. If there's an intersection in this town, built to handle a humongous load of traffic, this is it. So when someone says, oh, this, this office complex over here would, would increase traffic, I, I would venture to guess, putting something that size anywhere else in this town would create a bigger traffic dilemma than putting it right here. Now, I'm not married to the idea of going with office here. Okay, I took a little peek at the rezoning. You know, this is low-density residential, but it's certainly not the R12 stuff you see just to the north. Don't confuse yourself there. It's, and, you know, we're gonna have a connection to the Bradford, we're gonna have a connection to that public shopping center. This isn't the same sort of quiet pastoral thing we come to think of when we're talking about low-density residential. That's just my assumption here, so I could be wrong on that. But, sitting back on this thing, and, and just saying, let's let this play out a little bit and see what happens, I don't think is, is that harmful. And once again, there's no going back if you go the other way. However, I'll throw a huge caution on that, and, and I don't know how else to say this, but you guys better be right about the office space inventory, because I'm really hanging a lot of this on the fact that there's not much out there. And if, and if it just turns out to be that, oh yeah, here's, here's a whole pile of green on the next inventory that shows up, I'm gonna look pretty stupid. So, for now, I'm, I'm buying that, and, and I just think with the low office availability everywhere, I don't necessarily want to see this go office, but I just, I think we're shorting ourselves at the moment if we, if we LDR this.
Scott, I've got a question for you. In Imagine Cary's analysis, are they gonna look at market demand factors? What I'm really asking here is, are we going to define something that may not have substance in the reality of what the marketplace is willing to invest in? Or are we gonna consider market issues as well?
The answer is, is yes and no. We, we've done studies before, where we've conducted actual market absorption studies. We did that for the Town Center Plan, we've done that for the Alston Plan. They tend to be a very limited value, when you're looking at a 30-year master plan. They've almost never come to fruition. So based on our experience, some absorption plans can be very good if you know, you're trying to figure out the market for what you want to do right now in the next 12 months. You know what you want to do in the next 24 to 36 months. So you're building, you're, you're gonna figure out, am I building an office product, and I gotta start doing due diligence now to have a doors open, an office building in three years? After that, it gets really, really difficult. So the challenge, I think, for us is that we're gonna have to look out, we're charged with looking out 30 years. We've heard that there's concern from, for economic development, and from the council about, we keep flipping office land, what does it mean? Because we hold on to it, but we have been giving it up. So I don't know that there's a, a perfect answer to that. What we will do is get the best opinion we can from the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Director, and the best advice we can get from our own Economic Development Consultant, and other consultants on the project. As it was noted earlier, the office market's been really hit hard, as has the retail market. Except for Parkside, Town Commons, there's been almost no retail since 2008. There's been no office since 2008. So the challenge for the planning teams, for the board, for council, is, you know, is that, is that balance between short-term things you have a market for right now, and what you think you really want to hold on to for economic development in the future? And the crystal ball's really tough to see. So we try and take the 30-year view, of what's the kind of product that will be demanded, and how much land have we got for that market? Some of the challenges we have right now is, the market's still down, the Bradford's setting, we think, a very good starting point, because it's gonna create the bones of a good center. You have the same problem with Dellinger, where Centrum Shopping Center had just completed when the market crashed. So you have a site that's within 1,000 feet walk, a quarter, less than a quarter mile, five, 10-minute walk, of 15 restaurants. But the market's been dead ever since they opened, you know, for a new office. So, in this market, you've gotta take a longer look. You know, the market has to recover, and then the things that are gonna attract it have to emerge. And when that will happen, we don't know right now. We're gonna do our best to answer those questions, but boy, a crystal ball for any market is really tough. The housing market is, is just as tough, too. Conferences in the Triangle from the land development industry 10 years ago said Cary, said the Triangle, and especially Western Wake County, would not see any market for townhomes in the next 20 years. And they missed it completely, right? So market studies are very, very, you know, they're very difficult to do. You've gotta take the 20-year and 30-year view. That, that's kind of our advice.
My, my reaction is, for this property holder, if you're telling him, we're taking a 30-year view, he may have to hang out for 20 years before he gets to do anything with his dirt. I would imagine he might not agree entirely with your perspective.
Yes, I mean, you've got, you've got a really tough dilemma, you know, with, with owners, owners who have sites.
And what I'm looking for here is just some acknowledgement that there's a balance here.
Right.
We don't, as, as government comes on and say, no, what we want ideally is this, therefore, you, you can't do anything with your dirt until the market gets around to agreeing with us. And if it doesn't agree for 20 years, tough luck.
And what we've seen, yeah, and what we've seen with some cases, you know, that is tough, like Mr. Evangelista said, noted, on this site, it doesn't have to be all one thing or the other. You know, it could be some office, some housing, some office, you know, a little bit of retail. It could, you've got, you've got some options here of what you could do. You could do some little small lot, single-family, some townhomes, some office, and this and that. We've had cases where people kind of park, like for planned unit developments especially. With a planned unit development, you have to have a mix of uses, so they plan the phases. My market, I know I can sell the housing element in the next five years, I'm pretty sure I can sell the retail element in the five years after, the office element, I'm going for the 15th year. So there are other solutions than going all one way or the other, where you actually come in with a plan and you do pieces, you know, that, that come in with different uses.
Would I, got a question? Across the street is MDR. Would it fair compromise, instead of jumping from A to Z, go kind of like M in the middle?
So that's Seerstone across there?
Well, that's like the houses of Seerstone.
So that's age-restricted?
Although that could, a medium-density product, as Ms. Topp pointed out, you can do single-family housing in a mixed-use Activity Center. It would take, the process would be, you would see a mixed-use rezoning with a preliminary development plan. The test would be, as we brought up that slide before, you know, for plan conformance, are you providing more of what we need more of, and in what balance? And as Ms. Topp noted, I think you've gotta hit a minimum density of 3.0 or 3.5 units to the acre for single-family housing. And there are, with 65 homes, they'll be below that, so they would be.
So we'd have to go back and do another rezoning, or replan?
What he's telling us, if it stays in the Activity Center, it's gonna have to be 3.5 units per acre, or more, because that's the rules that we live with in the Activity Center. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And we don't, we're, we have the number right offhand, but yeah, to be in the Activity Center, some Activity Centers say you have to be at least 3.5, some say 3.0. And I forget of communities, which one they are. But you would have to hit the minimum single-family density required. And the notion is, is that the town's creating the infrastructure and investment to create a mixed-use, compact, walkable, higher, somewhat higher-density area. And so what you did, by town policy, what you don't expect to see in there are one-acre lots and things. That's not, that belongs in the country, in the suburbia, in the single-family areas, but in the mixed-use centers, you wouldn't expect that. So that's why, with the, with the ordinance, it was adopted that you have to hit a, a minimum density standard. You know, if you don't put your big lots right next to the apartments and the shopping center, you put your smaller lots and things next to the shopping center.
And just as a reminder, because this is a comprehensive plan amendment, there is no one-year resubmission timeframe.
Correct. Correct.
So if we deny today, we're not chopping the legs off from underneath the applicant, we're just saying, we're gonna defer until we know a little bit more about what we want.
Correct.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Carla, please.
Are we gonna get any more facts, or can I just go in?
No, I, I think we're good.
Let's throw something out there and see what sticks. I move that the board forward case number 14-CPA-06 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Hold on a second.
We have a motion, and we have a second discussion.
I think we need to make a decision. I don't think we should, you know, I mean, that's kind of what the board is for, is to step up and give our opinion, and it's not binding, the Town Council gets this, and they can, you know, they can vote a different way if they want to. But to me, this makes everybody in the vicinity happy. I don't know how you can go wrong with that, so.
Other comments?
Well, if I had my druthers, these two cases, I would have liked to have tabled and had a work session, and kind of got some, tried to eliminate some confusion that I have with, what the heck are we supposed to be doing with Imagine Cary out there in flux? A Town Council that on the one hand wants to save space for office development, key office development, and then you also hear them say that they want to see low density in a Activity Center. And I guess, if you looked at the way the council seems to be predisposed these days, they're probably gonna like this. And yet, it's totally the opposite of what was going on with Dellinger. But I don't have my druthers, and nobody's, the majority of the board doesn't want to table this. And by the way, the two applicants have asked for a vote on this, and I respect that request. So it's one of the reasons I'm offering up my second to this. But I do think that in the long term, 10 years out, I think we would do the town the most good by making this a residential development, rather than part of this Activity Center, and hoping that someday, either it's going to get developed commercially, or it's going to become an office complex. Neither of which will make the residents in that area very happy. So that's why I'm supporting the motion.
Other comments?
Clark? I see this scenario a little bit different than the previous case, in that here we have this site that's completely surrounded by development, mixed-use, other-family development, and, and to allow this to move forward to a vote, which is been asked for, I, I think we just need to do that. I see it more beneficial to provide residential here than to, again, bet on the come, if you will, for, for office space. As I said, I see this, this scenario, this location, totally different than, than the previous case, so I would, I would support the motion that we have on.
Other comments? Owner?
I, I also see it a little bit differently. One, I live in the area, and the traffic is horrible. And if I was an office developer and looking at that site, I would say, no way would I go there with an office building. I think that the low-density residential is, is the best bet for the site, and for the surrounding community.
Other comments?
I have one. Please. I feel for the, sympathize for the folks who live just to the north there, the residents, and I understand where they are, and, and for the property owner, very much so. I mean, I don't like the idea of, I think, as you mentioned, telling them what they can or can't do with their dirt. But that's why we have electeds who make the final decision. People who are directly accountable to the, the voters, who, who will make that call. My job is to look at this and see if it's the most appropriate use for the land. It is way different than the other one. I'm a lot more, I'm a lot closer to, to going along with this one than I was previously. But I just see this Community Activity Center with the road planned in there, and, and I, I get this feeling that several months down the road, when a rezoning or something shows up, we're gonna be, we're gonna hear, we can't put that road through this quiet neighborhood. And, and we've designed this thing for a different purpose, and I, I think the mechanism to alleviate traffic is as good as it gets in the town here. And, and one last thing, and, and I'm not sold on this being office space, not at all. But I, I've heard before that, you know, downtown Raleigh is where the action is with the office space. I drive to the park every day. Let me tell you, downtown Raleigh's got horrible traffic, too. But if that's where the office people want to go, and that's where the residents go, or, or North Hills, or wherever, I mean, if we turn, and, and I don't want to use bedroom community as, as a model, but if, but if everything goes residential, because that's where the market is today, what if donut shops were where the market is? We'll be throwing those up everywhere? We've gotta look a little further down the road, I think. And, and once again, all I can think of is just let this play out a little longer. And again, I, I feel very much for the people holding the D when I say this, but I'm more inclined to, to let it play out a little longer.
Well, as I mentioned, I came in right on the heels of the controversy around this. And that experience taught me a couple of things. First of all, citizens matter, but the guy that owns the property and the citizens that live around the property matter more than other people. And I also believe that, given the history of this intersection, it's naive to believe you're ever gonna put office there. Because, let me tell you, I'll have lynch mobs coming after you. And. Because, let me tell you, you'll have a lynch mob coming after you. And there's a political reality here, the council isn't going to do it. Whether we think it's the right thing or not, the council isn't going to do it. They're not stupid. And so should we recommend the council do something we know they're not going to do? Or should we maybe think about giving the residents there and the property owner a solution that they would feel most comfortable with? And yes, we lose a little bit of the strategic imperative for the long term, but as I've said before, I'm a little uncomfortable holding hostage property owners and residents for some ideal that we may or may not ever get. Any other comments?
I really have a hard time thinking about this one because I know as much as it was well-planned, those outer loop roads, people aren't using them. They'd rather just sit in a straight line and vegetate on a light and wait for it to turn. So if we ever had to lose that extra loop through there, heaven forbid, which we don't know because we're not at the site planning stage yet, I don't think that outweighs what the rest of the people and the immediate, like you said, the owner, the immediate area wants. And so be it, the person who lives four miles up the street may not be able to make that right turn as fast. I think the needs of the people in that immediate area, that it should be. I'm not real comfortable with jumping that far, that fast, but I think low density is the best use for that area.
So seeing no more comments, I'm going to call this one for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
We're going to need hands here. Did we really get a seven to one? All those opposed? We got a seven to one.
There's always one, isn't there?
Lone voice in the room.
I would have never guessed at that. Okay, now we can move on to 14 REZ 34, the Pitter Farm property. Ms. Berman.
I hope this will be a simpler request.
I hope it's harder.
And faster. How fast can you?
You know that lynch mob I was talking about? You make this one harder. You're going to start learning how to tie a noose.
This is a request to rezone about 21 acres on Good Hope Church Road. This is a vicinity map. It's on the north side of Good Hope Church Road, about a quarter mile east of NC 55 Highway. The existing zoning on this site is Office, Research and Development, ORD. The property owner contacted staff several months ago wanting to, inquiring to move a detached dwelling onto this property. It's currently used as farmland. In the ORD district, new detached dwellings are not allowed, so rezoning was required in order to bring in a single-family home. The proposed zoning for the site is R40 conditional use, which would allow a detached dwelling. There are two, one zoning condition proposed that would prohibit school and religious assembly use. The reason for this is to ensure that no use would trigger a traffic study. The land use plan designation for the site, as shown on the Carpenter Community Plan, is low-density residential. And this shows the boundary in blue of the Carpenter Community Plan and then also the boundary of the Carpenter Historic District. There are some stream buffers shown on the site according to Kerry's GIS maps, and field determination of these features would be made at such time when the property was developed. There are no parks or greenway facilities in the immediate, on the, on the site. This shows the transportation plan. Here's Good Hope Church Road. There is a future extension of McCrimmon Parkway plan that would go along the northern boundary of the site, and then a future collector extension that would connect Good Hope Church Road and the future McCrimmon Parkway.
Wow.
This shows a map of the properties that were notified of the public hearing. These are the properties within 800 feet of the site. There was one protest petition filed by the owner of this parcel up in the corner. Because of the land area involved, the protest is not valid, so it would not trigger a supermajority The protest petition expressed opposition to any future extension of Pilot Hill Drive, which is property within the subdivision located to the north of the site. At the public hearing, there were questions from, and discussion from council regarding the extension of McCrimmon Parkway and the Collector Road between Good Hope Church Road and McCrimmon Parkway. And you can see, just as a refresher, the location of these roads on the site. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is here to speak as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Phillips. I am the co-owner of Phillips Farms. As you can see on the map, Good Hope Church Road is pretty much our farm. Just this little property is what I'm hoping to move an existing house, my grandmother and grandfather's house, off of Indian Wells Road, a mile or so away. I'd like to move it to that property, and I'd like to live there. I'd like to grow up, have my kids grow up, keep growing. Me and my wife live on the farm, and keep the farm going. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions for me, am I good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all, good evening.
Just a comment, after having two of the toughest cases we've had in a while.
Thank you for saying that.
This is a pleasant, pleasant alternative. Do we have questions?
I'm just a little bit confused about the condition of no schools or religious uses. I mean, I have a real issue with that. I would hate to see people start rezoning things and saying, but you can't put a school there because every meeting we have, all we hear about is we don't have schools. Now, I realize he's going to use this for a particular purpose, and that's great. But I don't understand the need for that condition.
The reason for that condition, the way our ordinance is written, is written now, a traffic's, in determining whether or not a traffic study is required, whether or not 100 or more peak-hour trips are generated, we look at all of the uses that are potentially allowed in the district.
Okay.
And in looking at those uses, there are a number of uses that are special uses that could potentially be higher traffic generators, but that would be caught at the time of a special use permit. So in evaluating those uses, it was determined that the daycare and the schools were the uses with the highest intensity potential traffic generation, and if those uses were developed, that they would warrant a traffic study. So by excluding those uses, it doesn't require the applicant in this case to submit a traffic study.
So if he rezoned this, if we rezoned this to R40 conditional use, he would have to do a traffic study before he could move his house on it?
No. No, there would be no use, there would, there would be no use that would, that would be allowed in the full use of, in the full list of uses that are allowed in the R40 district. The, we would be excluding the two uses that would require a traffic study.
Even though he wasn't submitting a site plan for a school? This just really blows my mind. I've never heard of such a thing.
This is a rezoning.
And then like, how many years we've been doing this? I've never heard of such a thing.
This is a rezoning.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with site plan yet.
Right, but.
What we have to be thinking about here is, we rezone this, we can't necessarily depend upon the fact that this young man is going to move a house there. When we rezonate, he can develop it any way within that zoning.
Exactly.
Okay? One of the things we can do in an R40 is build a church.
Well, that's a good thing, right?
Well, it's an absolute good thing, except with that as a condition in his rezoning, he would have to do a traffic study as part of the rezoning. Because one of the potential uses within unrestricted R40 is a church, therefore, he has to do a traffic study to demonstrate, or to show what the traffic impact, should he use that use. As long as it's an option.
So if he didn't have this condition in here, and he just asked for R40, he'd have to do a traffic study before he put his house on it?
I didn't say it makes sense.
But that's, that's, that's correct.
That is wild, okay. All right. Well, I guess, but I also haven't seen a rezoning for a single house on an.
Well, I go back to my point, though. We're rezoning this to be R40 conditional use. The conditions are no religious assembly or school, but while we believe that this is going to be a single-family tract, it could come back
For another rezoning.
Next Monday morning with a request for a R40 residential development.
I mean, this is a big enough site for a school, right? So I'd just hate to see it say, no school. But I get it now, okay.
And I would just point out as well, the reason, the reason that this came to us was because the current zoning, which is a bit unusual in this kind of setting, that the current zoning is ORD, which doesn't allow single-family at all. The, in this case, the applicant, the request that generated this coming forward was the applicant requesting single-family. The condition, there's, the applicant is not committing to the, you know, committing to only moving one single-family dwelling onto the property. But it's rezoning to the R40 district, one of the, I guess, supposedly, well, you could go to R80, but other than an R80, the R40 would be like the lowest-intensity district that would allow detached dwellings. So with this rezoning, the applicant could come forward and develop a single-family subdivision of one-acre lots. He could move a single dwelling onto the property. So there are a number of different options of what could occur on the property, but basically anything that would otherwise be allowed in an R40 district, except schools and daycare, could be permitted on the site.
Other questions?
I have one question about the Pilot Hill Drive. Is that stubbed at the north, at that property?
Yes, it is.
Is there anything that stops the applicant from using that road or, you know, carrying that through to?
The, if that connects to the property line, if the applicant wanted to connect a driveway to that, he could. If the property were to be developed as a subdivision, you know, to actually be developed and we were looking at road connections, then there would be, with their connectivity, there would be a requirement to not necessarily connect directly to this stub because, as I showed in the earlier slide, bear with me just a moment. The comprehensive transportation plan shows McCrimmon Parkway ultimately being extended that would, that would connect with that, with that stub. And then ultimately, any development on this property would require construction of the Collector Road that would connect to the south side of the McCrimmon Parkway extension.
Okay, great.
But there's, there's certainly, there's no capital project, no plans to do that. That would just occur as the properties are developed.
Any other questions? That's a good question. Motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 34 to the town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and the presentation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'll support it, but I still have some real reservations about putting a 20-acre site into play and saying you can't put a school on it. But I understand why we're doing it. I want him to be able to do what he wants to do, so I will support the motion. But that might be something we need to look at as a different side issue.
This is the second time we've had someone come here wanting to move a house onto some land that their families had, and I think that's pretty laudable. And I'd love to know, I know it's probably not with our historic preservation group, their board, but I'd just love for them to know about that, too, because I think that's really an awesome thing.
I agree with you. It's just got a huge coolness factor.
It is.
Okay, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed. Can that motion Kerry unanimously? And that moves us to 14 REZ 31, the Kerry Park PDD amendment.
Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This is a request for an amendment to an existing, portion of an existing PDD on 7.25 acres. Subject property is located to the west of Green Level Church Road and east of Kerry-Glen Boulevard. Zoom in a little bit closer. The land use plan designation for the property is high-density residential. The existing zoning is PDD. As I stated, they're proposing an amendment. The existing conditions on this property are that a portion of the property's already been developed with two 24-unit buildings, so 48 condominiums on the property. The infrastructure's in place, and the property's been sitting vacant for a number of years. There's a development proposed that has a lower density than the minimum density requirement in the PDD. So the applicant's proposing for the area highlighted here in the darker gold color to modify the PDD so that they no longer have to meet that minimum density of 10 dwelling units per acre, and it would take it down to minimum of six. No change to the maximum, but it just gives them the flexibility not to have to go so high with the density. Property owners within 800 feet were notified of the request. There were no protest petitions. Support from residents of the Waterford condominiums had the president of the homeowners association for the adjacent property come and speak in support of it. No impacts on the site according to Kerry's GIS maps with stream buffers, floodways, and no issues with greenway trails. There is frontage along Kerry-Glen Boulevard, and the site has been developed for the most part with streetscapes in this area. There's a future proposed transit route along Green Level Church Road. And this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available if they have any additional comments to make.
You don't, you don't need to speak unless you.
I'm going to.
Okay.
Not to speak. But I'll make it to.
I would have been disappointed if you didn't.
No, I could have said, I'll answer questions, but I'm not sure I have ever not said something because I feel like I, it's my job. So, but I won't keep you that long. Last item, Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Ms. Grant did a fantastic job explaining the proposal. It is to reduce the minimum density. The use proposed needs the lower density. The maximum is still there, but it is to lower the density. There's no other changes to the PDD. It is an area where the pads have been there for a while. They were graded. Infrastructure was put in place in 1996. The one thing that I will point out is the support that we've gotten from the neighborhood. At the regular neighborhood meeting where the folks were notified, you know, per town standards, all those homeowners were in support of the rezoning. They were excited to see something finally happening, that the pads would be fixed and something built on it. They also had several meetings with the owners of the existing condos. And as Ms. Grant pointed out, someone from that group spoke at the public hearing. They, too, are in support of something happening. There will be improvements to the area that have just sort of been sitting there, and this will take care of those improvements. So for the people living there and in the surrounding area, they really. for the people living there and in the surrounding area, they really do support something finally happening on the property. So with that, I will close, ask for your support, and if you have any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Any questions? This is the easiest one we've had. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Let's see, this is a rezoning, right? I move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 31 to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries eight to zero. And our last order of business is to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.